Good evening, everyone. So good to see such a robust group. This is anticipated to be a lively, a lively meeting. So we call the meeting the Order. And Mr. Kraft, if you would do the invocation and pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge... Dear heavenly Father, thank you for the blessings we have received here in Oak Island. Thank you for allowing us to be here. Tonight, I want to lift up our friends and our neighbors in western North Carolina, our fellow countrymen in southern California, and ask you to give them an extra measure of your grace and your comfort. Tonight, I ask you to be with the council members, be with our citizens, open our hearts, open our minds, let us make the right decision on behalf of the people of Oak Island. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. So we have two presentations this evening. One from a company called Alliance about the code violations survey that they conducted. And the other is the FY 2023-24 audit from Preston Douglas and Associates. So where's our Alliance representative?
So I've got a presentation attached whenever they pull that up. Perfect. So my name is Brandon Emery. I'm the president of Alliance Code Enforcement. I've got a presentation, a PowerPoint here to go through what we've done. This will, this will kind of give you an example of what we found, what, what we're here for, a little bit of background on us, so you'll understand. So what we do, one of the things that we do and offer is called a town snapshot. And it's us coming in and identifying really every violation that you've got in the town. So a little bit about me, I'm the president of Alliance Code Enforcement, 40 years old, based out of Winston-Salem, North Carolina, got a bachelor's degree and a master's degree in criminal justice administration, previous sworn law enforcement, got out of law enforcement and ended up starting this company back in 2015. So this is our, kind of our 10 year anniversary this year. Like I said, we were the premier private code enforcement contractor in North Carolina. We specialize in full service code enforcement. So we service right now approximately 30 municipalities throughout the state. All of my staff are certified housing code officials, and we've been highlighted in quite a few training things for other towns. This is the team that came down and did the work. These are some of my staff that we, that we brought down to handle this. I just wanted to highlight them and put them up there because they, they did a lot of hard work. So here's what kind of the plan was. We wanted to identify what the town's needs were, meet the town officials, complete a ride along in the town, identify areas of concern. We did research on your zoning ordinance, your code of ordinance. We reviewed maps of the towns. Then we identified a strategy, created a plan, and executed the plan. That's really the, the lead, the lead into as to what we did. Now, the question is, what are we looking for? What were the violations? So what I wanted to do was, all the pictures that are in this presentation came from Oak Island during our time here during this. So kind of the first thing that we're looking at were minimum housing cases. This is going to be something where you've got a dilapidated structure, you've got an abandoned structure, you've got something that does not meet that minimum standard as set in your minimum housing ordinance that has granted authority under 160D 1203. The next is going to be some nuisance, junk piles, open storage, abandoned white goods. Those are all things that, you know, you drive down the street, you see a house that just has an abundance of open storage and things that create a real nuisance atmosphere. Junk and nuisance vehicles, whether it's a wrecked vehicle, a car that's been parked there for what looks like, you know, 30 years, whatever the case may be, what it does is it creates that nuisance environment for the, the individuals and the homes around. Overgrowth, there was not a lot of overgrowth, but we did identify some overgrowth here in town. A lot of times, it's going to be an abandoned lot, something that's, that's used to be used and active and is no longer being done, or an empty house, things like that. So you'll, you'll see the overgrowth. One of the things that was requested for us to take a look at was kind of the right-of-way obstructions. And that was pretty serious because, you know, a lot of your town is kind of surrounded by water, and you have a lot of dead end roads that ended that, and that area still is the right-of-way for the town. So what we did was anywhere that there had been gravel placed in the right-of-way that would affect where you all were, would potentially come out and do work as from public works, anything that would be in the way, blocking any type of work that needed to be done, we were able to identify all of that at that time. Cleaning this around businesses, so one of the specific ordinances that you all have. So I think it's a fantastic ordinance to have, and there, there's definitely some businesses that could benefit from being a little bit cleaner around their business. Trash cans, so we've identified the specific four streets. You've got a very specific ordinance that regulates trash cans, where they're allowed to be, when they're allowed to be there. And so we went through and checked those places as well as part of this. And then kind of your last part that we hit that kind of falls all together is kind of animal control, parking issues, retention ponds, burning noxious odors, hazardous trees, swimming pools in the street addresses. You know, your, your town, all your residences are required to have some level of identification on them. If they do not, it's a violation. So we even, we went as far as checking for those things. Now, how did we do all this? The goal was traverse every street in Oak Island and identify all violations that are visible from public right-of-way. So we weren't going on to private property to identify anything. This was all stuff that we could see while we're driving down the road, the same thing any citizen or any staff member would see. Gathered desired data, compile a report and for the detailed snapshot of the town. So I'll just note and disclaim that while we were extremely thorough with our inspection, it is possible that we missed something. So the good thing about it is, is the numbers that we provided to you, the only way that there would really be an error on those numbers is if they're just a little bit lower than what there actually is because we just happened to miss something. We, we went through with a fine tooth comb and, and tried to ensure that we found and identified everything that we could. So the breakdown on this is we basically took the town and broke it down into kind of seven sections, and I assigned those different sections to my inspectors to work, to go because if we just used one or two, we were going to be here for an incredibly long time. And we wanted to try to get the process done as quickly as we could. Ended up taking us about two weeks to do fully everything with doing a big chunk of it at the beginning, finishing it off, and then going through and making sure that we didn't miss anything. The information that we collected was the street address, the parcel identification number, the violations. And then what we did, what was asked for us to do was to establish a priority for each of the violations, a priority of either low, moderate, or high, based off of the property, what the violations were, how it looked. That way, it could give direction to staff as to which ones maybe they needed to address quicker, more so than others. The parameters, so no violations that were included that appeared to be kind of temporary or recent. You know, if somebody had, had just stuck something out to get picked up, we weren't putting that, considering that a violation. We didn't want to nitpick. We wanted to give you a really good idea of the numbers. The only violations that were documented appeared to have been present for an extended period of time. The violations identified came directly from your code of ordinance and zoning ordinance. The inspections took place between the week of November 18th through the 22nd, and then again, November, December 2nd through the 6th. That's when all these, the data was taking place. And then for reference, we use the Oak Island zoning map for the town limits and zoning districts. So what everybody wants to know is the results. What we found was the total number of properties standing violation were 1,171 properties in violation. This is a combination of residential and commercial. The total number of violations identified was 1,529. The only thing that we did not specifically do was count every single junk or nuisance vehicle that you had. If there were multiple vehicles on a parcel, we still considered that one violation because we didn't really want to bump the numbers up, you know, when we would, that normally in a town that we're doing code enforcement in, we'll just consider that one single violation, whether you have one car or 10 cars. It's just not abated until it brings it into the proper. Each property identified, as I said, was designated a low, moderate, high. We had 930 low properties identified, 208 moderate, and 33 high level properties that were identified. Kind of a breakdown, if you can see that, so animal control, we found two violations. Abandoned white goods, so abandoned white goods are going to be basically washers, dryers, refrigerators, things like that, appliances that are going to be abandoned and out in open storage. We found 12 violations of that. 28 of clean this around businesses. 345 junk piles, 95 junk nuisance vehicles, 75 minimum housing violations, 317 overgrown lots, 137 parking violations, 424 right-of-way obstructions. That was a pretty big one because that was something that, that we had talked about with the town prior to as being a concern. 43 street addresses, one retention pond, one swimming pool, and then 40, 49 trash cans. So here's a breakdown of the percentage of, of kind of what it looks like. Most of the stuff is very small, you're only dealing with minute, but you know, your big ones are the right-of-way violations. You know, junk pile, overgrown lots, things like that, really, that stuff tends to add up. So completion of this project, we prepared a spreadsheet containing all the collected data and stats, and then the, in a database that we provided to the town and to the town staff so they could go ahead and take appropriate action. That concludes, if you guys have any questions about us, what we did, anything like that, I would love to answer those questions now.
Just curious if you would share with us, so literally, I use the expression guardedly, a drive-by, you took, you took a snapshot literally in some cases. How did you discern between something that may have been temporary or instantaneous that day and something more permanent? Because that bumped your numbers down, correct?
Right. If we, now, if we had, so if it was something that looked like, something that had been like sit at the edge of the road, or something that had been placed outside that looked like it hadn't been there for a while, when you start looking at some of the open storage, just because we see it all the time, you can kind of look at it and be able to tell, does it look fresh? Or does it look like it's something that's, that's been there for an extended period of time? And that's what we tried to use our best judgment on in, in doing so. We would have, we, our choice, our desire was rather to err on the side of the low end versus err on the side of the high end and nitpick something and kind of fluff the numbers. We wanted to give you as accurate as we could, kind of the same litmus test that we use when we work in one of the 30 municipalities that we currently work in. You know, we're going to use our discretion to, we'll keep an eye on it, you know, and if it, if it gets worse or doesn't go away, we'll go ahead and open it up, or we can look at it and be like, that's been there for a while. You've got some properties that, you know, there's some violations been there for years and years, and you can tell by the way the property looks.
Yes, clearly. Thank you. So just to be clear, you made a judgment call based on your training and your experience?
Yes, that's correct.
And you erred on the side of giving the benefit of the doubt to the resident?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay. That's fair. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you tell me, sir, if you all worked any, did any of your drive-bys after dark?
No, we did everything during the day, and that was purely for safety reasons because we were stopping regularly, and we, we wanted, even though my vehicles are marked and can, you know, have flashing lights, we just wanted to be as safe as we could, and so we kept everything during daylight hours.
So we do have some identifiable violations, but you can only identify them at night because you can only see lights on in campers at night?
Right. Yes, ma'am. So when, when we were going in to determine kind of what violations we were looking for, that was one that did not pop up on that end. What we did was if we found like a camper that appeared to be set up to some degree or gave any indication, because it's something that, that is a problem in a lot of municipalities, we were able to identify that. So some of those minimum housing violations that we identified are going to be those camper issues.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Quick question, if I may?
Yes, sir.
With respect to your breakdown, I mean, I was looking through the actual data, and some of the, the, the way that you broke these down, like overgrown lot, junk vehicle, junk pile, some of those were low and some of those were moderate.
Right.
I was wondering how you, how do you differentiate?
So, so an over, we'll say, we'll, we'll look at a junk pile, an open storage. You could have something that is a violation that is just purely because they have a couple boxes or a couple bags of trash out. You could also have something that's a violation because they have a plethora of construction materials, vehicle parts, and just trash debris drawn out everywhere. So if it was something that could be cleaned up with just a little bit of elbow grease over a weekend, we kind of put that more on the low. If it was something that realistically looking at it, it may require the town to take abatement action and hire a crew to go out there and remove stuff from it, that made it more higher than that.
Okay. And then junk vehicle?
Yes, sir.
Define, if you may, if you could.
So there, there really are, when we start looking at code enforcement, you've got three different types of vehicles. You have a junk vehicle, a nuisance vehicle, and an abandoned vehicle. An abandoned vehicle, really, we don't deal with a whole lot because that's something that's abandoned on a public street, and us driving down, we're not really probably going to be identified. That usually falls under law enforcement jurisdiction. Junk vehicle, you have, that's actually regulated by the state. There's general statute that tells you what a junk vehicle is. And what that is, is a vehicle first that is not registered in the state of North Carolina. And then, once it's not registered, it is either, A, not operable and usable in its original condition, it's missing significant parts or things to keep it from operating, or it's more than five years old and worth less than $500. We really don't worry about the third one. We just look at the first two. That's really what junk. The other thing is nuisance vehicle. That's really your broadest, your broadest brush. That is something that creates some level of nuisance atmosphere. This is a car that may run if somebody jumps it, or you may be able to go in and start it, but it's been sitting there for a while. You can tell it's been sitting there because grass is growing up underneath it, it's got a lot of dirt, debris, mildew, stuff on top of it. And what it does is it creates that nuisance atmosphere, gives a place for vermin and bugs to, to come, for water to pool. Sometimes it's like an old pickup truck, and they're using it for storage. They've got the back of it filled up, they've got the interior cab of it filled up. And so it may not fit the requirement of a junk vehicle by statute, but it fits that nuisance vehicle. But when you start looking at how you regulate it and the actions that you take, you kind of follow the same method, no matter what it is. It's just really a definition, so that's why we always have those lumped together.
So as far as the registration of vehicles, right? So the only way you could make that determination, since you were not going on the property?
Right.
Is if they drove front first?
Yeah, if we could see that there was no tag displayed, or if there was a tag displayed, you know, the, the sticker on it was, you know, expired by two or three years, we could make the assumption that it is a junk vehicle, but nevertheless, so like, a nuisance vehicle may not be a junk vehicle, but a junk vehicle is always a nuisance vehicle. So when we start, that's why I say we paint with that broad brush of a nuisance vehicle. Anything that we did would fit the criteria of nuisance vehicle, some of them just may be by definition a junk vehicle, which is not going to affect anything different, it's just the state has specific regulations on the definition of what that is.
Okay. So looking at the tags, looking at the, make sure that was a current registration, that's something that you?
We, yeah, that is, that isn't a habit for us to do. So like any of the vehicles that we were coming across, if we could see it and we could clearly define it, you know, that, that would be something where we would, if we were sending a notice of violation for it, we would articulate at that point, was it a junk vehicle or was it a nuisance vehicle? But for these purposes, we just looked at what was a violation, and then whether it was a junk or a nuisance, like I said, it'll, it'll still be a nuisance, whether it's junk or not, it would still be a nuisance vehicle.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
If I may ask, first, very good information, very thorough.
Thank you.
Thank you. And your trip down here November 18th and your trip down here December 2nd, was your team in communication with our code enforcement?
Oh, we were in contact with Matt. He was who our, my primary contact was. He's who I met with myself and one of my inspectors, Derek May, met with him down here in Town Hall before we started. We did kind of a ride through, a rough ride through, through town, so for him to show us some of the, some of the concerns, some of the, an example of some of the things to look for that maybe are unique to Oak Island versus not necessarily some other places. And so I was in contact with him of letting him know, hey, here's when we're down here, this is what we're doing, here's where we're at, you know, do we need to meet? Did you need to talk? And he, he would check with me to see how the progress was going and how everything, how everything was. So he was our, he was our contact.
But I was looking through it, and again, very thorough. I was looking through it, and I don't know how you can discern, a lady on my street was having a deck rebuilt, and her address has a junk pile. Well, I know that workers were out there for about 10 days working on her deck. But when you drove by, you probably saw five or six boards thrown down in the yard. And so my question would be that the code enforcement, our code enforcement people would probably say that wasn't there a week ago.
Right.
But you had nothing to go by other than to label it as low or moderate?
Correct, right. So we're, we're, you know, we're taking this small period of time to pull this information. What we wanted to do, and I think what the, the goal was for us to, A, provide a list for your staff to go by. Some of the things, by the time they go out and look at them, are already going to be abated because just purely somebody, you know, took care of it. Something else may be in the middle of it. Now, if we saw something that the evidence kind of gave us like, hey, there's a project going on there, there's active construction going on, then we're probably not going to put it in violation purely because of that. We saw something else that put us to, to go ahead and decide to do that. Or if it was something that, you know, they, those boards had been sitting out there for a while, even though they're having construction, if it looked like it'd been there for an extended period of time, we're going to go ahead and document it, and then let your staff go back and inspect and say, okay, there's no issue here, everything's fine, they've cleaned it all up because they just got a new deck put in. But we would rather provide that information to you and have a few of them that fell under kind of that category than to just completely avoid that when it genuinely could be something that they started building, because we've come across, people started building a deck two years ago, and they still hadn't got the deck built. And so the other thing too is, you know, North Carolina requires some level of building inspection, building permit to be able to do for decks. And so we wanted to identify some stuff like that just in case from a zoning side.
But your office didn't go, didn't check with our permit office to say?
Not for that specific address. We just compiled that, and then that's something that they can look in on the back end. That was when we talked about the zoning violations, and some of the things, if it appeared to be something that was a high probability that it was or could be, then we wanted to go ahead and document that on the zoning side, and then that's something that they can look at when they get to that part.
One last question.
Yes, sir.
Right-of-way violations.
Yes, sir.
Is most of those cars and vehicles in the right-of-way, or was it also magnolia bushes and rose bushes?
Yes, sir. So there were going to, there's going to be some, some level of, of plant life in, in those areas. The majority of them, though, were vehicles, trailers, and boats. And then like some were concrete or gravel, where they've pulled it out and just covered it with that. So if you had to go out and dig, you're having to remove that, break through it, do whatever. But majority were vehicles, trailers, and boats.
Good deal. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I just have one quick question, if I can jump in. Just to kind of continue on council member Kraft's, I think, concerns, I'm going to call them. With so many of your identified violations being in the lower classification, I think what, there was 930 or something like that? Did you provide any additional disclaimer that said, this is low, but it's an easy fix? So what I'm trying to get at is, as our staff looks at your report and puts together a plan to go after this, obviously, they want to go after the 33 high cases.
Right.
But if, if a lot of the 930 cases are something that are either easy to resolve or were going to be resolved on their own, to council member Kraft's point of view, is there some kind of indicator in your notes that we could maybe not send staff out to those? So staff has more time to work on the higher cases and the medium cases, and they're not running around town chasing down 930 lower cases?
Right.
That may have rectified themselves in a weekend.
Yes, sir. So when, when I discussed kind of what we were looking for, what the town wanted data-wise with, with Matt, you know, it was kind of, I think, agreed on in our discussion that what, here's what kind of the categories meant. And so that low, in, in code enforcement, we have this thing called low hanging fruit. So we'll go after the stuff that takes a while, that is more significant, but while we're working on that, we're going after some of this stuff that generates the complaints because, you know, your, your neighbor's tired of seeing this particular thing, or this is whatever issue is. So there's not anything in the report itself that delineates that, but that's what kind of the, our agreed-upon definition of each low, moderate, high was. Obviously, we can have more discussion, you know, on that, and if we need to, on the staff level side of it. But if it was low, that was something that we put there as, use your discretion on your own, on your own time. It could potentially abate itself depending on what it is, but it's not something that is as significant. With the number of cases that you have on the high and then the moderate, and the staff that you have, it really shouldn't take a, a super long time to be able to identify those, open a case on them and get the, the progress started. And as long as, you know, everyone has got good time management, you'll be able to address those and also address some of those low hanging fruits, the low priorities at that same time. And, you know, if you go out there and it's abated, it's literally, you roll out, you look at it, you see it, there's nothing there, and you're done with it. You're just going back and kind of marking it off your list and saying, hey, that's taken care of. If not, then you're moving forward with the normal procedure.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
One follow-up question, if I could.
Yes.
Right-of-way to follow up with Councilman Kraft. So vehicles, trailers, boats, how about gravel? So people who simply had gravel?
Yes.
Adjacent to the driveway?
We, we did identify that. That is, that is in there because that was something that was specifically instructed to me to, that, that would be a violation, would be the gravel itself. So if we found something that was, no car was parked there, but there was, there was gravel in that area, we identified it as a right-of-way violation.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, if I may, so just continuing with this discussion. So the primary problem, based on your data, is vehicles in the right-of-way. We've seen a lot of that.
Right. Yes, sir.
To what extent were all of the vehicles a safety hazard, or you just flagged any vehicle in the right-of-way?
So, I mean, we identified every vehicle that was in the right-of-way. The difference would be potentially in, when we went in, and specifically if we put them at more of a high, moderate, or low level, would really be determined as to that inspector, what they identified, was it a safety risk, was it a safety hazard? We're going to go ahead and, and put this up as a higher level to generate, to do that.
So you would have differentiated if someone, for example, had a trailer that obstructed fire risk?
Yes, sir. We definitely would have. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, counsel? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for having me. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a presentation from Preston Douglas and Associates with the FY 23-24 audit.
And Mayor and counsel, while they're coming up, you have a copy of the audit presentation in front of you.
All right. Well, we're not, we're not going to get the full presentation on the board, so we're going to do the best we can. But good evening. My name is Matt McLean. With me tonight is Zach Brown, and we're CPAs with S. Preston Douglas and Associates, located in Delightville, Whiteville, North Carolina. Zach did quite a bit of the work on this year's audit, and he'll have some input as we move along in the presentation. So thank you all for allowing us to continue to complete your audit for, you know, several years in a row now. We really appreciate the opportunity, and we really enjoy working with the staff here. And with that said, we'll get started with the independent auditor's report. We've audited the financial statements for the town of Oak Island for the year ended June 30, 2024. It's management's responsibility for the preparation and fair presentation of these statements in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States. of these statements in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States. It's our responsibility as auditors to offer an opinion, issue an opinion on the financial statements. And in our opinion, the financial state, statements are free from material misstatement. And we feel very comfortable with the internal control environment of the town. So you all once again receive an unmodified opinion, the opinion you're looking for when having your audit completed. I do want to say that this has been a pretty wild transitionary period for the finance department of the town. Where last year you had a change in finance director. Uh, and within the next year, your finance director becomes a town manager. And then a new finance officer is hired who began with very little experience with governmental accounting. And then you had an implement, implementation of a brand new accounting software on top of all that. So it's pretty remarkable that you all were able to provide all the documentation necessary and all the reporting done so we could get your audit completed on time. So big time kudos to your finance officer. You should stand up and wave to the crowd, Ms. Helen Brank. Helen Brank and your town manager Catherine Adams for stepping up and willing through a really difficult time and getting the job done. So pretty, uh, pretty, uh, pretty great. So, um, I, I, I hate to, to do this presentation without our, without everything, but we're going to talk a little bit about the statement of net position over the, or the overall government's, uh, balance sheet. No, excuse me. We're going to jump right into some financial highlights of the town. Uh, the assets and deferred outflows of resources of the town of Oak Island exceeded its liabilities at the close of the fiscal year by 153.7 million dollars. That's net position. Net position is the primary indicator of the economic health of an organization. And almost 140, 54 million dollars. The town of Oak Island is in really good shape. Net position increased by 20, over 25 million dollars as of the end of the fiscal year. The town of Oak Island's governmental funds reported combined ending fund balances over 65 million dollars with an increase of 8.1 million dollars in fund balance. And at the end of the year, unassigned fund balance for the general fund, which is the main operating fund of the town, was at, the fund balance was at 92.62% of total governmental fund expenditures for the fiscal year. And the town continued its diligence in the collection of property or, of property taxes at the tune of, uh, 98.3% on the year. Sales tax revenues increased by approximately 208,000 dollars due to the continued economic growth of the town. And the town continues to incur a low cost of debt due to the town's high bond rating. So a lot of financial highlights, not a lot of negatives of what went on with the town of Oak Island for the year ended June 30, 2024. And we'll talk a little bit about the statement of net position or the balance sheet and how that looks. Uh, that's the assets, liabilities and net position of the town. The end of 2024, net position was 235,471,000 dollars versus in 2023, that number was 224,384. Uh, an increase of, you know, a little over 10 million dollars on the year. Liabilities went down. Debt was, you know, all the, the debt has decreased because the town, the town has been able to pay those debts off. In 2023, it was 96 million and to 2024, it's down to 81,797,000. We had an, you had an increase of net, in net position of 25,331,000, bringing your total net position of 153,674,000 by the end of the fiscal year. Any questions at all? You all do have the presentation in front of you, right?
Yes.
All right, flipping on to the next page to the statement. Do you all have any questions so far?
Counsel?
Real quick and not to get you off your thought.
That's all right.
Uh, page five, 92.62%, 27,763,000. What percent, I know that's very high and we're happy. What percent would we be comfortable with? 81? 75?
Well, I, considering the amount of, so we'll, we'll see a chart in a little bit to show you kind of the 10 year, you'll see the 10 year history of what's going on with net position and, 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 and the, uh, what's required of those governmental expenditures. What fund balance do you need? If you're not a coastal town, you're looking at 25%. But if you're a coastal town that faces two, sometimes three hurricanes or tropical storms a year, it's nice to have a flexible fund balance to where if you've got to spend money in those particular instances, you know, i- it's a good thing. So, so I feel like you all have done an extremely good job. And I know Mr. Bach and I have gone back and forth with this in previous years. But I think that the conservative nature of the town of Oak Island and how you've kept that flexibility is extremely important because we never know what's going to happen on the beaches of North Carolina.
I wait.
So the presentation itself, is there a way that we can get this on the screen? Can you email it to Mike?
Send it to Mike. He's working on it.
It's here. It's here. We just don't have it up and I, I wish that we did. So if I flounder, I apologize.
A lot of people here, a lot of people.
Oh, here we go.
There you go. He got it.
Maybe.
Ask and you shall receive.
Oh, no, that's the main one. That's not the, uh, that's not the presentation, but that's all right.
I'd send them both.
That's a start.
It's the other one in the email that we sent. Any question on the balance sheet? Statement of net position. All right, next chart shows the, here we go. Uh, we're going to get there. I know we are. Oh, here we go. All right, one more. Can I use it from now?
Next page. There you go.
All right, one more. All right, here we go. All right, perfect. Okay, um, the next chart here shows the, the income statement or the statement of activities uh, for the year. And this, this shows total revenues. And we'll start at the bottom here and kind of work our way up. Charges for services went from 24.6 million dollars in 2023 to 26.2 million in 24. Operating grants and contributions went down from 24.5 million in 23 to 11.7 million during 24. Capital grants went up from 842,000 dollars to 1.9 million. And property taxes, sales taxes and accommodations taxes all increased slightly. And other revenues increased by 2.6 million dollars due to an increase in investment income as you all moved, uh, some funds to take advantage of the interest rate environment we've been in. So good job there. So on the year, total revenues increased by a little over 6 million dollars on the year. Does that all make sense?
Can I bring this down? Would, would the grants be lower in 24 as opposed to 23 because of the large grant we got for sand re-nourishment?
Absolutely. And, and we're going to talk about that in just a little, just a bit. So you're going to see a pretty significant drop in revenues, um, due to that. So that's a good question. Absolutely. Next page, this page is page eight. We're going to look at the total expenses of the statement of activities. Decreased overall by almost 6 million dollars from last year. The one area that we always like to look at because it's been an area of kind of contention there, the wastewater fund. Um, and the wastewater fund continues to do exactly what it was supposed to do. And then, and we're seeing it become, um, you know, I don't want to say more profitable, but you're seeing, you know, depreciation expense and interest expense on those bonds decrease. And the wastewater system start to show a lot of improvement over the years. So, so you see that. Um, also, uh, also debt, also less money was spent in environmental protection over, over this past year. And Zach, you want to touch on that, some of the single audit work that you did on environmental protection? Talk a little bit about beach re-nourishment.
Yeah, so as, as Matt mentioned, um, you know, total expenses did decrease year over year. Um, and it's mainly due to, uh, expenses classified as environmental protection. Um, as you all know, the, the town completed a major project, uh, the turtle habitat sand project, uh, in fiscal year 2023, uh, which led to the decrease in those expenditures in 2024. Um, you know, we expect the environmental protection expenditures to increase going forward. You know, as you all have additional, uh, environmental protection projects planned such as beach re-nourishment project. Um, um, so we'll definitely, you know, expect to see that category increase going forward. And, you know, due to the amount of, of federal and state grant funds, um, that were spent in fiscal year 2024, uh, we did have to complete a single audit in addition to the financial statement audit. Um, and for fiscal year 24, the, the single audit threshold, uh, was 750,000 for federal expenditures and 500,000 for state expenditures. And what a single audit does, it tests the compliance with your federal and state grants and contracts. And so as part of the single audit that we conducted in additional to the financial statement audit, we had no issues noted. Um, so no compliance issues at all with your, um, federal and state expenditures. So that, that concludes, um, you know, the environmental protection note there. If there, if there are no questions, I'll pass it back to Matt.
All right, so.
Matt, before you flip the slide, I was, I think your question is more for Catherine about the wastewater. So for everybody in the audience, everybody who's online now, how long do you think, not to put you on the spot, but how long would you guess, uh, we're going to be paying, each of the people in this room is going to be paying 600 dollars a year for the sewer system bond?
So there are four different components to the debt for wastewater and two of them are state related and they should be paid off in five to six years. The other two are longer term and I believe it was till 34. Um, so that would drive the ability to reduce the 601. Um, however, we are continuing to monitor that. If you'll recall, last year I had done a financial analysis on wastewater and was hopeful that we would be able to reduce it last year, but at the last minute, we got an increase from Brunswick County. And so that prevented us from even being able to do a small reduction. So we continue to monitor it every year.
Thank you.
But to that point, like five years ago, it was 800 and 841 or 843 or something. So a few years ago, we did, we were able to lower it to the 601. So, you know.
We'll continue to try to do so.
It's on the horizon, just.
Yeah, which is a good segue into this next slide here. You look at, you know, the total net position since 2015. You know, that's 10 years. You go from 79 million to, you know, to now at 154 million in net position for the town. So over 10 years, you basically doubled, doubled your net position. So, you know, good management of the town and the growth of, growth of the area is really evident when you see numbers like this. And of course you see the debt, the, the drop, you know, there between 21 and 22. And that goes right back to, that was a major hurricane year where there was a lot of expenditures had to be paid out before any kind of grant money came in. And then you see that jump in those next couple of years. So kind of interesting to see, you know, this particular chart. Uh, the next page is page, let's see, how can I do that? Can I pull that down a little bit? I don't know how to do that. Oh, we got it. We got them working on the back end there. That's good. All right, so on page 10, um, this breaks down your total capital assets, um, in 24. And you had some significant purchases in motor vehicles, which were primarily some new fire trucks that were purchased. So we had an increase of, of 2.3 million dollars in capital assets, uh, for 24. Uh, you're, we talked about debt decreasing, which is, which is significant. Um, debt decreased over 13 million dollars as of June 30, 2024. The majority of which was you all paid off the special obligation bonds that were for, uh, the beach re-nourishment as well as continued payment on the revenue bonds on the wastewater system. Any questions on decreasing the debt? All right, next page is page 12. And this looks, this looks at, uh, a 10 year history of the, the oper, the normal operating fund, the general fund where fund balance, um, almost reached 30 million dollars in 2024. Uh, and, and back in 2015 was less than 10 million. So we've, you all have been able to, you know, triple that over 10 years. And then, and then then all the governmental funds, page, this is page 13, this shows is government, all the governmental funds, including the general fund, um, where, uh, since 2015, where it is now, has reached over 65 million dollars and an increase over last year of over 8 million dollars. And then governmental fund revenues, um, over the past 10 years, we'll, we'll pay attention most to 2024. They were 38,902,000 dollars, um, versus in 2023, which you just mentioned. Uh, Mr. Craft, you know, you saw that drop where the grant revenue really decreased, which decreased the governmental fund revenues for this year. And then on page 15, the governmental fund expenditures over the last 10 years. And you all were right around 30 million dollars for 2024. And you can see the breakdown of, of how those expenditures were made over the departments. And then on page 16, revenues minus expenses leave you change in fund balance. And you had a positive change in fund balances 2000, in 2024 of 8,167,000. And there you can see all the changes in fund balance over the past 10 years. And then last but not least, these last two statements show, uh, the property tax collections that we talked about in the financial highlights, which is always a highlight since we've been here the last few years. You know, you've collected 10,417,000 dollars in property taxes with a 98.3% collection rate. So great job there. So, you know, financially, Oak Island's in, in, in really good shape. I know you all have a lot of decisions to make, you know, going forward and, and how to deal with the beaches and, and those type of things. But, but, you know, the way things have been managed and, and the way that the finances look, uh, the town of Oak Island is in, is in good shape going forward. So any questions at all for us?
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you all so much. Y'all have a great year.
Next on the agenda is adjustment and approval of the agenda. And there are, I have a note here. When we approve council representation, help me out here, Lisa.
So on the consent agenda, we have approval of creation of a steering committee for the bike plan. And I think council was going to include in that listing Councilmember Chulo for that council representation on that.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have one adjustment, please.
Uh huh.
Under new business, item 5.2, consideration of a council liaison program, I would like to remove that from the agenda for tonight's meeting.
And then we have one other change in the consent agenda. It's a correction, but we'll deal that with that when we get to the consent agenda. Anything else, council?
Mayor, is that the one I pointed, I asked you about? Okay, thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Don't move, Madam Mayor.
There's second?
Second.
All in favor? It's unanimous, thank you. Next is public comment. I know there's a lot of excitement, particularly around parking. I know a number of people want to speak, some have put themselves in groups and appointed someone to speak for that group when they're thinking similarly. So that's an option. We'll kind of see how this, how this goes. It, it's not helpful to hear the same thing repetitively, but we will make sure that we get everyone's voice will be heard. So we'll see how this goes and make adjustments as we go along. Please state your name and address before you address council. There's a three-minute time limit, as you know, and please watch the screen because the countdown, you're responsible for managing your time. And just a hair, a few seconds beyond what, what the three minutes is, the microphone actually turns off. If you have written statements that you're speaking from, please make sure your name is on it, and if you're willing, share them with the clerk, Lisa Stites. That really helps in, in note-taking to make sure things are accurate. Lisa?
We have Paul Dubay.
Madam Mayor, town council members, Paul Dubay, 1105 East Oak Island Drive. Later in the agenda, you'll be discussing and voting on whether or not to increase the number of non-resident parking permits from 1,500 to 2,000. I think this is a mistake. Residents are already taxed with the problem of finding parking in the summer months, and it is only going to get worse. It has recently been announced that a new 1,500-acre tract of land off of Midway Road will be developed for 3,600 new homes called Midway Commons. Lots will start being sold in 2026. That's just around the corner. Where's the closest beach for the residents of this community go to? Right here on Oak Island. If you think it is crowded now, just wait. Yes, we would increase our revenue nicely, but at what cost? I have heard each of you say that you're making decisions with the residents in mind. You had the opportunity last month and decided not to extend the season through October, and we applaud you for that. Do the right thing here. Do not increase the non-resident parking permits. Thank you.
So I'm going to ask you to hold your clapping. I understand that you're excited and want to support, but if we're going to get through this quickly, in effect, this is a business meeting, and unless there's appropriate time to celebrate, we want to conduct this as a business meeting. So thank you for your cooperation. Lisa?
I'm sorry. Colleen Ziegler?
Colleen Ziegler, 145 Northwest Second Street. Here we are again, two years after paid parking, and we still don't have a good communication system with our, the whole, everyone on the island, from eight to 10,000 people. And we still, it still feels like we're under the council will decide, which is what the previous town manager would say at the last meeting I was at. That's what he said, people asked him questions, and the council will decide. Ultimately, that's true, but how can the council decide anything without listening to the people of Oak Island? We come together as a community, the, the things we can do, sorry, I'm not a public speaker. Ideally, the council will go with whatever the people here want. I personally don't have strong feelings either way. I would like to see it paid parking, rescind it altogether. Seems to cause more problems than it solved, and it, we've lost more than we've gained. But doesn't, my opinion is not important. What's important is the collective opinion, and I'm hoping that the council will go with what the citizens want. Now, if that doesn't happen in the future, there's something the citizens can do. We don't have to feel stuck. Even if we don't do anything, it doesn't matter, just so you know what your options are. You can come together and find candidates, recruit and support candidates that will support what you want, like communication would be the one thing. The other thing is, and you guys may want to really think about this, change in council terms from four to two years. It would open the pool and give us more power as citizens because it opens the pool of candidates for council. So if, you know, you, somebody runs on a platform of communication, then they don't do it in two years, like next? And you have plenty of people to choose from. There's three ways to do that. They can do that through the legislature. The city council can pass the ordinance on their own with or without a referendum. If the city council passes the ordinance and does not make it subject to a referendum, 10% of the voters can petition for a referendum. If the city council does not pass an ordinance, and then 10% of the voters can still call for a referendum. Referendums, I understand, are expensive, and these are all details that people would have to look through. If anyone wants to contact me, I'm no longer, I no longer have any kind of group or anything, but email OKICivicLG@yahoo.com for any questions. Thank you so much. You guys are a gift. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Gail Burr?
Can you see me? What? Hi, my name is Gail Burr. I live at 500 Country Club Drive here on the Oak Island. I am the president of the Oak Island Beach Quilters and the point of contact for the rec center. This guild was established in 1984. We are a group of approximately 100 quilters, mostly retired, the majority over 65, with a few active 80-year-old members, some of which are here tonight. We meet at the rec center. We appreciate that our guild is recognized as a not-for-profit organization. I am sure you have seen the Town of Oak Island Christmas tree skirt and the quilt hanging at the entrance of the rec center and the wall hanging at the Barbie library. I have attached a list of our charity works that we have done in 2024. Recipients include Habitat for Humanity, Creative Hands, Novant, Hope Harbor, Honors Quilts for Military and First Responders, and Meals on Wheels. If you purchase these items on Amazon, it would total over $134,000. That's in 2024. To run all the workshops, we need equipment and tools. We have been storing those items in our cabinet at the rec center for several decades. In addition, members bring their own machines and supplies. Recently, the town made a decision that the rec center can no longer store non-town-owned items. We have been told that we cannot rent a three-by-three-foot square space in the corner for one cabinet to hold our equipment. Look around here and see what is required to be transported to and from each week for 48 weeks. They are bulky and heavy. I have attached a list of these items and their weights that total 94 pounds. This is an extreme hardship on a group of seniors that do so much for our local community. We ask to be grandfathered into the previous agreement or create a special circumstance exception in light of our seniority age and safety concerns. Please do the right thing so that we can continue nonstop with our good works. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter.
Thank you. Done it. Heinle?
My name is Chadon Heinle. I live at 3874 Big Bang No Way in Southport, and I'm the membership person for the guild. I have some letters that were written as thank you notes that I'd just like to briefly read. You gave 21 quilts of honor this past year to both veterans and to first responders. And one of the thank you notes is, "Thank you so much for honoring me with this beautiful quilt and all you do for all the service members and veterans. It's wonderful memories that will always be with me. Thank you, thank you, thank you is just not enough." Another letter was from a hospice family. The mom had been in multiple facilities. They walked into the last place that she was in, and she had one of our quilts over her bed, and it just gave them comfort and solace in the last few days of her life. Hope Harbor had sent us a thank you note saying, "Dear Oak Island Beach Quilters, thank you so much for your very generous contributions in assisting our mission for helping victims of domestic violence in Brunswick County. In 21, 22, 23, we provided more than 1,400 nights of shelter to more than 115 women and children and 4,858 documented services. We have 15 beds and cribs. It's a wonderful, perfect world that people would not have to be beaten if they were loved, if, to claim love. In a perfect world, no precious child would be subjected to the lasting trauma and sorrow of growing up in a violent home. In this imperfect world, we treasure your continued commitment to our mission and its blessing that you have as a supporter." And the last note I have is from the Day for Hope, which was last August, and it was to get the school kids ready for the next year. Your beautiful creative pillowcases were well received. They brought smiles and excitement when they told they could pick any design they wanted. One 14-year-old boy said this was the first pillow he had ever had, and he was amazed that he could choose his own pillowcase. A seven-year-old clutched her pillowcase and said she was going to keep it forever. Thank you so much, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Julie. Guy Gentry?
My name is Guy Gentry. I live at 329 Northeast 57th Street. My wife, Donna, and I are, of course, permanent residents. First, I'd like to thank you for your, for your service. My wife and I have both sat in similar chairs in other localities, and we feel your pain. I'd like to echo the comments of the first gentleman that spoke very eloquently, and I may not even be, have to take my entire time because I feel just like he does in opposition to the increase in parking for non-residents. Though I respect and appreciate what non-residents, tourists, so forth, do and add to our economy and our community, I don't think that the decision would be in our best interest. Certainly, the $62,500 that would be raised from this cannot be the driving force because it wouldn't be worth the headache, and it certainly wouldn't be fair to residents. Many of us have faced lots of challenges and have had to become very creative when it comes to grabbing the little piece of our jewel out on the ocean during the busy times, starting with Memorial Day and, and really significantly past July 4th holiday. My creative endeavors involved taking the family over in the truck, unloading them before we got a ticket for not being able to find a spot and double parking, taking my truck back home and either walking back over or taking my bicycle and hoping that it wasn't stolen during the time that we were out on the beach, and then doing the reverse when we got ready to leave at the end of the day. So though I am opposed to the increase in, in non-resident seasonal passes, I am in favor of adding more spaces and overabundance of those being for the residents so that we can enjoy what we came here for. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Steve Johnson?
My name is Steve Johnston, 119 Northwest 23rd Street. I'm echoing some of the other comments about the paid parking. The thing that I'd like to bring up is we already have 1,500 permits for non-residents. I think that needs to be capped at that. It obviously is not going to bring more money in. At $62,000, if you got rid of all of the pay, all of these passes, then you'd bring in more money than they actually bring in themselves. We cannot increase them. There's no way to continue to increase them. What are the citizens of Oak Island to do when these planned housing developments come to fruition and the influx of new citizens overrun our beaches? Locals have nowhere to park. When this happens, will council reduce the number of non-citizen parking passes? The answer is, I bet not. We elected council with hopes they would do what's best for Oak Island. So far, I have only seen Councilwoman Terry Carter and Councilman Bob Coolio continuously act on our behalf as citizens. How about you other council members? Would you mind start doing the same? We would appreciate it. Also, one other thing that I found out and come to my attention today is we have two golf cart rental facilities on the island itself. I know for a fact that one of those facilities buys up a bulk number of passes when they come on sale. Why can we only buy three as citizens? And they can buy as many as they want and put on their golf carts, as they're going to make plenty of money off of. I would urge all council members, if you would, to take a serious look at this. You're here for us. We do need tourism. I understand that. But if they want to come here and pay $5,000, $6,000, $7,000 for a rental house, what the hell is $150 more going to cost them to park? Thank you.
Thank you. Max Graham?
I live at 2214 East Dolphin. I bought my house in 1984, and I've been living here permanently for I bought my house in 1984, and I've been living here permanently for five years. And I would urge you, do not increase the number of passes for non-residents. We expect the city council to act in the best interest of the residents. These people have a way to come here. They can pay daily rentals, or they can stand in line or whatever it takes to get one of the 1,500. But there's no reason that city council should give them a higher priority in enjoying this place than us. Between taxes and insurance, for my 1,032-square-foot house, I pay about $12,000 a year. Now, these people that are non-residents are not paying any of that, and I don't mind if they pay $7,500 a week to stay in the house in front of me on the second row because they're not knocking me out of anything. And if they want to pay $750 or $800 for a golf cart for a week, that's fine. These other people that are non-residents can have the same attitude about enjoying the beach. If they want to come here, pay $25 a day or whatever it costs. We don't, we're not in a position where we need the money. The auditors have just proven that. And if you want more money from these people, increase the price by $125 a year, that's $20 a month, and get more money out of these people that are already getting the parking passes, the 1,500. Don't increase the number. We expect you to make decisions that take care of our benefit. You're speaking for us, not these people. So I'm, my sentiment is almost like hearing about open borders. Are we doing open parking now where people that don't even live here have a higher priority on getting subsidized parking than the residents? That, I mean, you know, I'm thinking back, I'm thinking back to Easter, which I guess it was this past year was before paid parking started. I went 20 blocks with my resident parking pass on my golf cart trying to find a place to park because it was free parking for everybody. When you make it free, then it's open borders. So why didn't we have paid parking start before Easter? You would have had enough money left over. Well, this $62,000 was peanuts, and in the whole scheme of things, it's peanuts. There are other ways you can increase it. I mentioned this to some friend, and they said, "Well, why don't they just go with the same time as dog walking?" You know, it's, what, 15th of March? Pick up that, expand it on the shoulder seasons. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening to the mayor, council members, and representatives of the Oak Island government. Thank you for your time. My name is Bruce Pitt. I live at 2 Augusta Drive in Oak Island. I represent Citizens for Planned Growth. Our mission is to improve and conserve and protect the quality of life on Oak Island. Our question for the council is, why is Oak Island subsidizing non-resident parking? During the five peak demand periods of each year, every time a non-resident parks in one of our spaces, which are in short supply, the town loses an opportunity cost to rent that space at the temporary parking rate. That's a fact. Substantial revenue, which could be generated, is being lost because of these non-resident parking passes. This money is needed for beach renourishment and other good public purpose for the town of Oak Island. You can plug in whatever numbers you want, and we put on our group sites on Facebook and Nextdoor some cost analysis. But there's no denying that the fact is, if you send, give somebody an annual pass at an incredibly low rate versus charging $25 a day for temporary parking, you're going to be losing money on those passes. What Oak Island needs is fewer non-resident parking passes, not more. Oak Island residents have earned lower parking rates at the beach as they pay property taxes and property owners also, but non-residents do not and do not, have not earned subsidized The shortage of parking spaces on Oak Island at the five peak periods of the year means there are too few parking spaces for everyone, including Oak Island residents. What we need the council to focus on is getting more temporary parking spaces during those peak periods and ceasing subsidizing non-resident parking so as to improve the financial position of the town and better support beach renourishment and other good public purpose. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Linda Evans, I live at 256 Northeast 56, 2, can you believe it? 256 Northeast 64th Street. I've had my house here for 10 years. We've been here full-time almost five, and we love it. And the reason that we moved here is for the beach. We almost moved to Southport, but we came here for the beach. So first of all, I want to talk about the parking, and I agree with everyone that who what they've said is, we don't need more off-island people being able to park when we can't. Two things happened this summer. One, I loaded the grandkids. They were so happy to come and visit us. Load them up on the golf cart, get down there, you can't park. You go exits, either accesses either way, can't park. Sorry, kids can't go to the beach. Meanwhile, I had a friend that was down that rented on the island, and they rented a golf cart from one of the large businesses that was brought up. And guess what? They had parking. I could not get to them because I couldn't park. And if you're not on the beach by nine o'clock, you're not going all day. So I think all of you that live here, if you use the beach, you, you know it's an issue. Besides not selling more off-the-island passes, the parking that we do have for residential can really be used more efficiently than it is. We have huge parking spots for two little golf carts end to end, and, you know, we could put them in nose-wise and get six or seven in there where they're parking two now. And if we're all paid and we all have our permits, I don't understand why they care if we put two in a spot or four in a spot. But we brought it up last year. They said that we were just starting paid parking, and once it was up and running, we would readdress these issues. So please think about more resident parking and no more off-island. We have enough. Those people, if you drive down the road, you see all those developments coming. They're not coming for our food line. They are coming for our beach, and we, you know, we should have first priority. So also, one other quick note, I'm a retired realtor, but do you know how hard it is to show people a million-dollar home on the island, which now, let's face it, we're close to a million, and say, "Well, parking's a problem. You're probably not going to be able to use the beach when you want to. It's an issue." That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm Glenn Baker, the president of the Oak Island Civic Alliance, and I live at 110 Northeast 16th Street. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to voice my opposition to the proposed increase in non-resident seasonal parking passes from 1,500 to 2,000 in 2025 season. Let's start with some numbers. Currently, there are 1,176 available non-resident parking spaces, yet 1,500 passes have been already been issued. This creates a deficit of 234 spaces. Increasing the passes to 2,000 would only worsen this imbalance, leading to more congestion and frustration. For residents, we have a population of 9,811 with 7,806 resident parking passes sold this year, yet only 253 resident parking spaces are available. That's a clear mismatch, highlighting that parking is already a serious challenge for those who call this town home. Last season alone, there were 1,175 violations related to non-resident parking in resident-only spaces. This not only illustrates the strain on the current system, but also raises an important question. If violations are so prevalent, how will increasing non-resident passes improve the situation? Residents who already endure weekends of driving 30 to 40 blocks just to find a parking spot will bear the brunt of these headaches. Many of us have given up on going to the beach on the weekends entirely. If increasing the revenue is the goal, why not explore the alternatives? Increasing penalties for parking violations. This would not only bring in revenue, but also improve compliance. Adjust the cost of parking passes for businesses that profit from beach access. Most importantly, commission an independent parking study by auto. We need real data and professional insight to ensure that any changes to the parking program are fair, sustainable, and beneficial for everyone, residents and visitors alike. This parking program is still new. Most residents have been patient and willing to give it a chance, but now it feels like we're being taken advantage of and left to shoulder the consequences. I urge you to vote against this increase and instead, take the time to evaluate the program's current state, work with residents to find solutions that enhance rather than diminish our quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Carrie Lenzen. I'm at 340 Northeast 46th Street. I'll be brief because I'm also, I'm gonna, don't want to reiterate exactly what you've heard, but also regarding the 33% increase in non-resident passes. I just want to say that one of my biggest takeaways from coming to this meeting is, is hearing both from Councilman Bach and Councilman Martin in particular, the importance of process and to trust the process. And I think this is an example of a time where we need to trust and follow a process, and it's my understanding that we do have an analysis that's waiting to be reviewed. And if we could wait and make a decision that's data-driven to be able to determine what is best for the town of Oak Island and its residents and not jump to a vote based with just urgency and to check a box and move on to the next month, it would be greatly appreciated by the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, mayor, council, and town staff. My name is Jackie Ball. I'm at 243 Northeast 63rd Street. I oppose the increase of non-resident seasonal parking passes from 1,500 to 2,000. I urge the council to focus on maximizing the available parking spaces for residents and visitors. Focus on the spaces, not the passes. I urge you to vote no to increase the non-resident passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Gallo, I live at 327 Northeast 50th Street. I've been a full-time resident for a year and a half. I love the island. One reason I moved here is because of the beach access and the beautiful residents and neighbors that I have on Oak Island. Just love this area. And I'm going to say, please, vote against increasing the permits because I don't need to go back and rehash a lot of things people have said, but, you know, trying to find parking, as we all know, when you have grandkids in your vehicle, and you have to go 20 blocks to find parking, especially on the weekends, is very frustrating. And sometimes what we do is somebody mention, you bring a bike. You park, you bring a bike, you go home, and then, you know, it just defeats the purpose. And I'd like to say to the people I voted for or like the last election have agreements with me that we need to better this island, and our biggest asset is the beach, and let's make sure that we take care of the beach because it's the only beach we have. And again, thank you, council, for giving me the opportunity, and you all have a nice evening.
Thank you. How many more, Lisa?
We have, Mr. Williams, if you'll go home, one second, please. 10 more, but there are two people that have a different topic.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Derek Williams. I live at 125 Southwest 5th Street, and I'm here to talk about parking, but I've got a little bit different perspective. When I hear talking about increasing the number of parking passes, I am concerned that as a result of that decision, there will be even more pressure to find additional parking spaces. I've heard it mentioned a couple of times. I'm here tonight to ask that if this should come to pass, that you do not consider adding the parking in areas where there are existing trees or along neighborhood streets. Last year, a number of parking spaces were added to Barbie Boulevard. Now, some might say that these spaces did not have a negative impact, but I would suggest that it's a little bit too early to know what the impact on the trees will be, but I do know that that new parking along that really one of the nicest neighborhood streets we've got in this town really degraded that. And what I'm afraid of is there's a push to say, "We need even more parking," and you push that parking even further up, which would be even more detrimental. I understand that parking is a really big issue, but I hope that you don't destroy our town's streets and the trees in the process to bring those more, to bring more spaces on, to bring more revenue. Because at the end of the day, quality of life is very much driven by streetscapes and trees and those kind of things. And if you're not careful, you may get some extra revenue, but you may destroy the quality of this, this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Andy Spradley, 114 Southeast 6th Street. I'm here for the Oak Island Beach Preservation, and I'm, we've got some slides, but I'm not going to wait for those. I just want to let you know that we are gearing up for our 23rd annual silent auction with a wine tasting. This will be held Saturday, March 29th, so put it on your calendar, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. at 801 Ocean Event Center. This is our biggest event to help raise funds that help us with our goals of protecting our beaches, education, which includes scholarships that we give away, and community engagement. And part of that are the doggy bag, waste bags that we provide. We're the ones that buy them. We're the ones that put them at the access points. Tickets right now are going to be 55. They will be available at Grape and Ale. They have been really helpful for us to use them, starting February 1st. Please check on our website and our Facebook page for more updates, but we would love to have you all come out and help us. And like I say, it takes a lot of people to help make these things happen. They don't just happen in a vacuum. So for our auctions, our beach cleanups, filling doggy bags at the access points, cleaning the access points, these don't happen by themselves. We need people to do that, and so we can always use more help. Let us know if you would be interested in becoming part of our team. We would love to have you, and I've heard so many people say how much they love the island, that's why we do what we do. You can either talk, see me, I've got cards to hand out, or check us out on our Facebook page or our website. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Mayor, do you want me to continue with the parking or do you want to? Okay. What, what's the other non-parking?
We have someone signed up for Waterside. Preliminary plat, Nate Allen? Nate Allen?
Let's take that one and go back to parking.
Are you with the applicant, though?
We are, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, there'll be an opportunity, I believe, to speak during the item?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Martin... Martin?
Mayor, I'm going to continue the theme. Appreciate your leadership. Appreciate your service to the town. Martin Baltimore, I'm at 6906 East Beach Drive. Not going to take a lot of time because it's been very clear, the opinion of the residents is to not increase the non-resident parking passes, and I agree. In December, there was much discussion, and I appreciate the lively discussion on the matter, and also regarding the study for the engineering study for the additional parking. Hopefully, I agree with all of you that we can yield some increased spaces. We may not. They may decrease, they may be static. Nonetheless, there's great competition for space. And I would urge you to, one, wait for the study and to make a decision. You've paid for it, it was not a great cost. Let's utilize the data before we execute on a plan. And two, vote no on increasing the non-resident passes. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Diane Schott. I live at 201 Northeast 39th Street. And I totally agree with all of the people here that have said no to increasing the passes. But I did want to bring one thing to your attention that I just recently found out, and I'm not sure who knows this or doesn't know it, and I'm not sure exactly how it works. But I was just informed by someone that I work with that lives in the apartments on 211 down near Midway, that they pay, she pays $10 for a parking pass for here on the beach. Now, I'm not sure if, and maybe it's part of the town, but still it's an apartment complex, not sure how many people are in it. They just rent, so they only pay property taxes on their vehicles. They don't pay property taxes. Maybe the apartment complex does. So I'm not sure how they're working that as to, do they buy non-resident passes or do they buy some other thing and then sell it out to their apartment renters at $10 apiece? But she said she pays $10 a year to have her parking pass for Oak Island. So I'm not sure how all that works. But between that and other new apartments they're building and now all the new houses, I don't think increasing the non-resident spaces is the right thing to do. I think looking at a way to maybe get some more resident spaces without messing up the environment and the trees, like everyone has said. But I'm not sure how the thing works with the apartments, and maybe someone can look into that and let us know. But I just want to say that I'm against increasing the passes. And I know when we voted this past election, many of us voted for ones who said they were going to listen to what the people said, and I'm hoping that's what you'll do. Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. I want to begin by telling you that I think paid parking was a good idea. I've lived at 124 Southeast 63rd Street for over 20 years. Before paid parking, it was very chaotic. People parked in yards, they parked where fire hydrants were, all over. So what you did was you created order. That's what you did. But then I want to introduce another idea to you. I sent, I think, all of you a document, The Impact of Overtourism. And what's interesting? What people were saying tonight really substantiates this document. So what's happening is that if you look at, and I did some research, and this is probably what I could add here. The average age and the median age of the Oak Island resident is 60.7 years. That is predominantly an older demographics with 37.47% over 65, which means you have a lot of people on fixed incomes that are facing things such as, with a gentleman who said about the increased insurance and taxes, we're all experiencing that. Well, one of the aspects of overtourism is inflation. You start running people in, you're going to drive the price of things up. And when you do, your citizens are, you know, they're going to be suffering because of that. So that's one consequence of that. So as my mom used to say, give you three good reasons. First of is the overpopulation and inflation. The second one I want, I think we really need to focus on is safety. You know, it's hard sometimes even to get on and drive down the road with the number of people. The more people, the more parking passes you give to non-residents, the more of a traffic jam. You're going to have an infrastructure problem because if you look at the analysis of the growth of this area, if you go on, just do the research, it's going to grow. It's grown dramatically this last year. It's going to continue to grow. Thank you very much, and I appreciate it, and the environment's another issue.
Thank you very much.
Chip Frazier, 706 West Dolphin. Mayor, Council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I support paid parking, and I'm not resistant to change. However, I'm baffled by the imperatives associated with the program. Recall the implementation of the program that seemed to be haphazard, unthought, debated for a long time, but poorly implemented. We've made progress since then. And now there seems to be an imperative about season passes. I see two problems with season passes. The preceding 13 people reinforced this point that increasing the number of parking permits decreases the opportunity for residents to park at the beach in non-resident spaces. And the second problem is that there seems to be a greater benefit for commercial interest with respect to these non-resident parking passes. And I'm referring to, of course, the car rental agencies and people who rent their property but purchase a season pass to make that property more attractive. The good news is that it's easy, obviously, to make this change, so there's no imperative to do it right now. And the second is, the revenue generated is a positive, but needs to be balanced with intangible impacts. I have two recommendations. The first is that you complete the parking study that you're paying for, consider season passes with the insight provided by that study. And I'm not confident that Auto Connect, who recommends increasing the number of season passes, is a reliable source. Yes, they know the market, but they only look at the revenue side. They don't look at the intangibles. And secondly, I haven't heard any discussion about off-island mainland parking, and I think that should be considered in addition to the litany of issues y'all have to address with respect to parking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for your time. I think you're doing a wonderful job. And I have some questions. Now, I've been wrong before. I asked my wife, she has a big book. My understanding is that the permits for the residents, the allocation is never filled. We haven't filled that allocation. There haven't been enough people buying them who are residents to say, we're out of them. And the same thing with non-residents. Now, I know that there's a parking spot problem because I live at 130 Southeast 40th Street, so I walk to the beach, okay? I go down there and drive down there, and I see parking spots right at the end of my block, all full. I drive down a little further, I see parking spots, no one's there. I think somewhere along the line, you have to explore the possibility of the off-site parking and getting a bus. Because if you don't, you're going to run into the problem Long Island and everyone else run into, people just screaming and getting into arguments. I don't have the answer. You're far more knowledgeable than I am, and I thank you for that. Last thing. I live at the end of Davis Canal. I've taken the time to learn Pelicanese, and I've learned from the Pelicans, the canal is getting full of a lot of dirt. All right? You should explore drain or cleaning it out. And if you don't, you're going to run into a problem with stagnant water. Because I see it happening now.
Yeah.
That dirt is getting higher and higher. After a while, you won't have a canal. And that concerns me and all the other Pelicans. I want to say thank you. You're doing a great job. It's a serious matter, and I thank God it's in your hands, not mine.
Thank you.
Oh, and my wife says, she apologizes for me coming.
Hi, I'm Terry Dunn at 2728 West Dolphin. We've lived there about eight years. We're at the old RV park, if everybody knows. When we bought our lot, there was an RV still there. As John Bach can tell you, I'm the number one parking, paid parking advocate on Oak Island. I'm here today to talk about a few things you've already decided that I would like to discuss again, as well as the thing everybody else has already talked about. We're in a situation right now where we're offering $33.5 million. We can't get any takers for sand. I mean, I know we lowered our bid, but we lowered the bid with the same per-human price. That's not going to happen. And yet, we decided, we don't need $50,000 for additional parking in October because we want to be a good neighbor. That's great, but we need $50,000. It's either they or us, or me paying it in taxes. Two, we're continuing this $25,000 parking enforcement from 5 to 9. I live on West Dolphin. There are nobody, nobody's there 5 to 9. There's tons of parking spaces. If you don't want to walk four feet, that's an issue. But there's no parking issues unless you're at the, right when you cross over into Oak Island. We're wasting $25,000 there. Third, the adding parking spaces we've discussed. And fourth, I found out last year, we have a bulk parking rate. Okay, what I was told by the town, sort of somebody, he's already left, was, oh, these are for the people that have more than three vehicles. Well, I don't know too many people that have more than three. Most people have two cars and a golf cart. It's obviously for the golf cart renters, which is, which most of, a lot of, do not pay Oak Island taxes. So we're charging $175 for people to spend $650 to rent a golf cart for a week. They're just spending, as somebody pointed out, $5,000 to $10,000 for a house. It makes no sense why we're giving golf cart renters, vendors, a break. And I don't get it. So in summary, and lastly, Carolina or Wrightsville. Wrightsville is the gold standard for revenue on paid parking. I know we don't want to do that, but they don't offer resident passes. In closing, I suggest we reevaluate not having paid parking through October. We have the farmer's market every Monday during the summer. We have concerts on Friday night. I know that parking's over, but they don't enforce parking. People are parked on the street where they have to be to go to the concerts. So the $50,000, giving up $50,000 because we have events is not true. We have events all year long. Two, get rid of, do not police 5 to 10. It makes no sense. And lastly, I'm done, and so I'd like to thank Ms. White, Liz White, for telling me that. And I'll, and I'll say this to every one of these people up here, of course, we elected them, but you have the opportunity to run for those jobs if you don't like what they're doing. I believe they all are, and I appreciate everything you guys say.
My last, please, sir?
You are not.
I was just going to just sum it up. Helen Hunt, 167 Northwest 5th Street. And first of all, Happy New Year to all of you, and thank you for all that you do. And I, like everyone else, am opposed to increasing the season parking passes to 2,000 for the non-residents. It's my understanding, the town is not required nor obligated to offer season passes to non-residents. By doing so, the non-residents are receiving a special privileged opportunity. I'm not going to repeat about families not being able to find parking places. I went through the same thing. And all I can say, it becomes a commotion of frustration to even go down Beach Drive to look for a parking place. Luckily, we have a friend on Beach Drive, so we got to park there. Isn't that great? I don't see any need to increase revenue by increasing these spaces because we just heard from the auditor that the town is doing great and that we have almost $30 million in the unassigned fund balance, which I know you have to keep some of that for the hurricane and flood decades and such.
Floodings.
Yeah, the September 16th. So, the only other thing I can maybe add is it seems to me there is this big focus on continuing to offer special privileges to the non-residents and not to the taxpayers of Oak Island. It would be nice if more time was spent prioritizing the finding of additional resident parking spaces as well as handicap parking spaces for the people of Oak Island. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. You're the last one.
If you're sitting here tonight, you don't want to increase the season passes, so I'm going to pivot. I had a whole thing set up to talk about. I'm just going to pivot off of that because some of my neighbors are here, and I've stood here several times since this started. But, I'm sorry, Matthew Lox, Northeast 64th Street. So one of the things that we come across is we have a 110-foot area, that's about 12 feet wide, on one side of the road, that you can't park. There's no parking there. It's, would be great for golf cart parking, nose-in, and I think that's some of my neighbors here, that's their frustration, is we're down and all the paid parking spaces are full, and there's this great stretch of property that you can't park in. And so, you know, we're going to different accesses. And I think part of the frustration also is, I've stood here, I've... And I think part of the frustration also is I've stood here, I've, in front of the previous council, I've sent emails. I'm not big on finding the problems. I'm big on solving the problems. I went out and measured the area. I came up with a number of parking spaces, all of those things. And this parking program is not new. I've heard some people say, it's, it's new. It's not. We're going into year three. That's not new anymore. At this stage, I would think some of these things have been working out. I'm hoping that the survey kind of bears those things out. And I think the, the last thing I want to say is, in reading the last minute, it was one of the council members talked about the busy times, the holidays, the couple of holiday weekends and Saturdays are busy. And those are really the times where parking is an issue. I work five days a week. My wife works five days a week. Saturday and Sunday, only time we can go to the beach. I can't wander around the beach on a random Tuesday at 10 o'clock in the morning. It's just not feasible for me. So it's a big deal that there's nowhere for us to park on the weekends. It's, it's not a small issue. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. That's it. Thank you very much for everyone that spoke. Counsel, I'm going to propose we take a 10-minute break before continuing. Everybody good with that?
Yeah. I'll make a motion if we need one. I gotta pee.
We are back from break. Next on the agenda are council reports, and I'm going to ask council to keep them brief, and I'm going to, to kick this off. Most of my time for the end of the calendar year has been working on relationships, specifically around the, working with other towns within the immediate region on shared interests. I've also been working with UNCW, both the part of the engineering and science department that will affect both the ICW coastline as, as well as their beach. We have enough things to offer each other, and I'm hoping that we're able to develop an MOU in short order. The other is working with BoM, the Bureau of Ocean and Energy Management, Moffett and Nickel, State Representative, and UNCW to Joe Long from UNCW to working on a different proposed plan for sediment management as opposed to what we currently do, which is really no longer effective. It puts towns at at odds with each other, and that's not how we should be working. So we hope this turns into a pilot program, and I'll, I'll keep you abreast of that. The, working on the UDO changes for the special regulations and the Consolidated Land Use Plan Steering Committee kind of balances out my work. John?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be very brief. Very grateful for the, not only the, the effort the town made to make the holiday season, Christmas season, the pageantry of it, but more importantly, the unseen and unheralded acts of charity that I stumbled into. There's so many people helping other people in need. So I'm very grateful for that. Would urge those of you who are so inclined to pray for LAFD. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry?
Yes, I want to give you a, a quick update on behalf of my colleague, Mr. Kraft. We serve on the Steering Committee for the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Update, just wanted to give you, give you, let you know where we are now. We had a meeting yesterday. We've entered what I kind of refer to as Phase Two. Phase One was staff and the consultant gathering a lot of data on Oak, on our town, on Oak Island. As you remember, we had a public input session where you were asked to provide some information. You received, had an opportunity to provide a, answer a survey. All that data's been gathered now, and so we're starting into what we call Phase Two, and that allows us to create a vision statement for the town of Oak Island and to create specific goals or revise or refine goals from the 2017 plan. And under those goals, we'll have objectives. And then under those objectives, we'll actually have action items, which are measurable metrics that will allow us to work toward completing those goals. The most important thing I want to tell you is that on February 12th, Wednesday, February 12th, there will be another public input session. This will be the second input session and the last input session. So please mark your calendars. Please plan to attend. We need to hear from residents and businesses. This is your plan that will guide the town in how we move forward. So we need, we need your input. So please plan to attend. February 12th in the evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Bill?
I'll be brief. Also, many meetings this past month, many more meetings this coming month. January, we talk about our strategic plan and outlook for the, for the coming year. I want to say to Mr. Green, he may have already left. Hopefully, if not myself, somebody will bring up, what are we going to do about Davis Canal? Quilt ladies, hopefully somebody will bring up, if not myself, what are we going to do about their quandary? But we work hard. That's all I got.
Thank you very much. Bob?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, what we, what we have already started to speak about tonight with your, all of your input. I have spent a lot of time on the phone the past two weeks talking to many of you. I've spent a lot of time on the phone talking to my counterparts in Holden Beach, Carolina Beach, Curry Beach, Ocean Isle Beach, Wrightsville Beach, and Sunset Beach, getting their perspective on paid parking, validating the numbers that I've been able to find and put together analysis of what they're doing compared to what we're doing. So thank you for everybody who spoke. Thank you for everybody who showed up today and voiced your opinion. It's very important. Kind of wish we can get this kind of turned out at every meeting, but, you know, we can't, can't win them all, but thank you again for everybody being here. We do appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll be really brief. So 2025, the Cape Fear RPO Board kicked off. We had a meeting in January. The focus of that, I think I reminded you, we spent six months in 2024 at the end of the year diligently preparing the prioritization list for NC DOT. So now we patiently wait for that feedback, likely comes in around March. And then we're back hard at work going through that prioritization list. So again, just, I continue to thank you for your support for our transportation needs. And, and we're fortunate that this will be the last year of my seat as a voting member on the Cape Fear RPO. So my term will expire at the end of this year. We'll have to appoint another representative. So we'll look forward to that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So if there's any doubt that your council is working, I think we just heard evidence that, in fact, it is. We'll move to the consent agenda. There are two items on the consent agenda. Approval of two minutes from November 12th and from December 10th. And then the second is approval of creation of a steering committee for the bike plan. There is one change that I was given in the December 10th minutes. There is a sentence that talks about our attorney, Lydia Lavelle, said that in January, they would take up the task of closing out the easements for beach nourishment. And that was a misspeak, a misquote. What the new language, what it should say is that she said that in January that they or we would start working on prioritizing which easements are needed for beach nourishment and work on those. So it's no secret that we didn't pass the threshold for the money that we needed based on the dredging company. And so we're going to have to prioritize where the sand that we have goes. And we do have a conceptual plan. We just have to get more specific. Also, with council's consensus, we would appoint Mr. Chulo to the Steering Committee for the Bike Plan. Is there any disagreement there? We okay with Hunt? All right. So with that, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda? So move.
Second.
All in favor? It's unanimous with those adjustments. You want to pass this to Lisa, please? Committee appointments. The only appointments we have are to the Part III Advisory Board, two terms entering, ending January 2027. The candidates are Mike Ballinger, Jack Harwell, and Elizabeth Pollock. So council, if you'll vote and sign your ballots.
Mayor, I do have all the ballots, and the votes are unanimous in favor of Mike Ballinger and Elizabeth Pollock.
Excellent. So congratulations to Mike Ballinger and Elizabeth Pollock. We appreciate you serving. We'll move on to administrative reports. Catherine?
Thank you. All right. As council mentioned, it has been a very, very busy and active time, and January is as well. Just want to quickly remind you of our customer service efforts. Our customer center is under construction right now downstairs in Town Hall. It's happening, and we're very excited. Also, our cross-departmental customer service committee has begun. And don't forget, we have launched our own mobile app, OKI Connection. So you can stay connected with the town with just your cellphone. I think you've heard just briefly about this as well, but an important plan going on. As Councilman Karpner reminded us, there is another upcoming community engagement on February 12th at Town Hall and our next steering committee meeting on February 13th. So that effort continues. I continue to try to give you some updates on the capital projects and where we are with some of the major ones. Of course, a lot of interest around our PTC-8 storm repairs, that the flood event, that we had some significant damage from. The map on the right pinpoints the areas that have been reviewed by the state. They actually came down here. They had to go through that review. We had to follow state procurement guidelines and do informal bids for the construction awards. But we're happy to announce that repairs should begin very soon. Second project, the Crowell Street Dune Infiltration, also related to stormwater and flooding. Those bids should be back next, tomorrow. They're handling that from the consultant's standpoint, so we're not doing that in-house, but it's moving forward. The Recreation Feasibility Study, that project is on track, moving quickly. We have the vendor in place. We have met with them from a staff perspective and gotten them started. They're working on their condition assessments of the building. Tonight, we hope to have the Rec Center Committee appointed and start that official kickoff very soon. Town Hall parking lot improvements are ongoing. The bike transit plan will kick off in February. And happy to report, we're going to finally be able to provide regular updates on capital projects publicly. We'll put it out on the website and try to keep those live and up to date for all of the public to be able to view. Couple of additional special events coming up. We have our supplemental regulations meeting on January 21st. Our Citizen Academy starts February 4th. And of course, Mardi Gras by the Sea, February 22nd. And we have a special guest with us today. I'd like to ask for Thomas. Thomas, is he here? You want to do it, Lloyd? So the Brunswick County Sheriff's Department has mentioned this as well. This is just a quick public safety announcement. This is something that's near and dear to my heart. And I want to continue to provide the information and share it with those of you that are watching at home, but also those of you that are here. Please share it with everyone that you know. There are a lot of scams going on. They're alive and well. The, the police department's very vigilant in, in watching those. We're going to put it in the current as well. But just wanted to take a moment to remind everyone, be very, very cautious for upcoming scams, scams that have been identified this year. With all the AI technology, a lot of impersonators out there, fake Facebook Marketplace advertisements, stolen check identity theft. These are just things that, that we have seen recently. Gift card scams. Someone calls you and says, please go buy a gift card and give them the number on the back and they'll reward you. It's, it's a scam. Be very, very careful. Bitcoin kiosks. Social engineering is what the police refer to, that gaining trust to access your information. Protect your private, personal information. Of course, text messages. Anybody gotten a UPS scam recently? Get them all the time. They said, "We're trying to deliver a package to your house. Give us some information." I'm sorry to have to, to remind us that that is out there, but please, please be aware. These are tips from the police department. If you're going to do internet exchanges, meet at designated spaces. Be sure to involve your bank. They won't call you. You, you need to reach out and call them if you have any concerns. Contact us, local law enforcement. Please monitor your credit report. Make sure you don't miss anything there. No government agencies, including us, will be calling you, telling you to give them a gift card or that you'll be in some sort of government trouble. It's just not real. Be careful. Anything you click on, any hyperlinks from anybody you, you don't know on the internet. And most importantly, if it sounds too good to be true, it probably is.
Catherine?
This is our contact for the police department. Yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to mention that there is a safe place for internet exchanges downstairs in the police parking lot. So if you're, you want a safe place where you can conduct your transaction, there's actually space at the police parking lot to do that.
All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to old business. Consideration of remaining items for the 2025 paid parking system. Bob?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion so we can get some discussion going. The motion being that we table this discussion until after we've received the results from the $50,000 parking analysis. I understand we'll be getting that shortly.
By the end of February.
Okay. I'll stand by the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion for discussion.
All in favor?
Discussion.
I'm sorry. I missed discussion.
I'd like to take a few minutes if I could. Mike, if you could put up, I've got a brief presentation, a couple of parallel point slides I'd like to walk through. Next slide, please. So when talking to residents in the island, they were asking me, how are we spending paid parking revenue? And you know what? I didn't know off the top of my head. So I actually had to go back and pull up my notes. So real quickly, this is the way we decided the distribution of funds for 2024. It was 50% to tax relief, 15% to maintenance, and 35% to special projects. Special projects this year, the bulk was paving. So this is one year only. So in our budget sessions, workshops that we have coming up, we'll decide kind of what that, how that split is. But that's what the But that's what the current split is. We're assuming, as of last month, we were told by Jim Varner at Auto, we should have about $1.2 million roughly every year in paid parking. So in 2024, we sold 1,500 passes at 175 apiece, 78 bulk permits, which is by the golf cart rental companies, and that came to 287,000. 2025 recommendation by Auto, 2,000 passes at $175, removing bulk permits. So it gives us an additional $62,000 revenue, but we heard tonight, we've all experienced ourselves, all, you know, through email and social media, that weekends during the summer are impossible for residents to find, for anybody to find parking spots. So the thought of increasing, adding any more non-resident passes at this point just seems ludicrous, and especially, especially until we receive the results from the $50,000 parking study. So what may the parking study show us? Well, here's a couple of topics I just threw out there, and this is just mine. So just don't take this as the gospel, right? So maybe they come back and they decrease. They recommend that we have to decrease the number of parking spaces because our parking spaces are too tight, and we have to open up the bumpers, maybe. Increase the number of resident-only parking spots, certainly. Convert some parking lots to LSV-only lots. We have one LSV-only lot on the island, and that's at Middleton, which you could put 12 golf carts there. If we would have put cars there, we would be able to get six. So any LSV-only lot, we can probably double the amount of parking spots in there. Compact cars, reconfiguring, there's a lot of opportunities, but we don't know because we haven't seen it yet. So three options, the way I see it. We wait until we receive the result from the parking analysis, option A. Option B, follow Auto's suggestion, increase revenue by 62,000, but increase non-resident seasonal parking passes by 33% and eliminate any bulk passing, so it's 175 for each. And lastly, option C, and option C, if we're going to make a decision tonight, would be my recommendation, which is increase the cost of non-resident seasonal parking passes. So my recommendation would be, we keep it 1,500, not 1,501, but 1,500 non, we don't cut back, but 1,500 non-resident passes. We increase it from 175 to 225. It's only $50, limited to three per non-resident. If they want to do, if they want to get more than that, that would be 375 instead of 325 currently. So that generates additional revenue. So the recommendation by no additional non-resident passes, if we simply charge them $50 more, will actually produce, if you use the same numbers from 2024, an additional $16,000 more than if we accepted the Auto recommendation and increased by 500 non-resident passes. So this, to me, is a no-brainer. I've spoken to all the neighboring towns and neighboring beaches. We have Carolina Beach and Currie Beach. They both charge 225 for non-resident seasonal passes. 175 is certainly a bargain for Oak Island. So $50 does not seem like much pain to charge anybody. I look at Wrightsville Beach, which somebody mentioned was the premier revenue for paid parking. Well, they generated $7.9 million in paid parking last year. And you know how many non-resident passes they have? Zero. They don't sell any. So we're not there yet, but with the homes that are coming, 3,500 potential homes north of the Midway Lowes, 3,600 approved by the Planning Board already, west of the Midway Lowes, the Williamson Tract, Pine Forest, parking for residents is going to be a challenge. So if we distribute the income the same way in 2025 as we did in 2024, then this is what it would be. You know, I guess bottom line, it's not that, it's not going to move the needle much. It's certainly going to increase revenue some, but if this council's insistent on increasing revenue, I would, hopefully, we could wait for the parking study. If we can't wait for the parking study analysis, then we simply raise non-resident passes by $50 apiece. Thank you.
Phil?
I came prepared to say a whole bunch. Paid parking, when it was first discussed, I voted against it. I stated I want what is best for the residents of Oak Island. That was my only concern. It is not our responsibility to look out for Leland, Raleigh, or Charlotte. They don't pay taxes here. Now, two years in, Oak Island is the one town in Brunswick County that did not raise taxes last year. We even lowered in some areas. $1.2 million in parking revenue, that helps taxpayers immensely. First, before we talk 1,500, before we talk 2,000, the first thing we need to address is we need 200 more resident spots yesterday. That would alleviate a lot of problems. And we can do that right now. Nice speech, but no answers. So what's the smart thing to do? Auto Parking has done an exceptional job of overseeing the parking. My hat's off to them. Jim Varner of Auto stated there would be no hardship at selling 2,000 out-of-town spaces that there is at selling 1,500. He's the expert on the ground. Let's peel back the layers of the onion. Mr. Bruce Pitt alluded to some of this, but I want to go into a little bit of detail. The money is not in passes. The money is in hourly parking. $5 an hour, eight hours a day, seven days a week, is $280 per spot per week. That is $7,280 per spot per year. 1,000 spots at 26 weeks at full capacity generates $7,280,000. Even at 60% occupancy, it generates $4,368,000. So it's too late to do it this year, but next year, I want to move, discuss, hopefully prevail on addressing only hourly parking, no off-island passes. Where are we on this? I came here tonight to say 1,700 passes at $225 would generate $383,500. If someone makes that motion, I'll second it. But here's where my vote is. My vote is 200 more resident parking spaces for people in Oak Island. That gets my vote. That's where I stand. I did not hear one statement from anybody tonight saying they wanted 2,000 parking spots. All I heard tonight was people saying they wanted 1,500 spots. I'm not in opposition. I want 200 more spots for Oak Island residents.
John?
Wow, interesting. So I guess we need to establish, at least in my mind, some baselines here. And I'll start with this. So Auto has metadata. It suggests that on the big weekends, Memorial Day, Fourth of July, there'll never be enough spaces. It's always going to be crowded. But the rest of their data suggests that a cap of 2,000 would work. And in effect, last year, we sold 1,500 passes and we authorized bulk to 500. So we were already working with those numbers. That's just fact. If we were to wait for the study, Catherine, what does that do to Auto's ability to proceed? Does he lose a month?
Yes, last year, they started February 3rd, and they're prepared to get started now. I will say Ms. Alyssa Irons is here in attendance from Auto if you do have any more questions.
Well, I think that's pertinent because I'm not going to wait if it derails the goose that laid the golden egg. I mean, let's get serious here. And I don't know if it does or doesn't.
We can do either. It's up to you on when you want to sell the season permits. It's up to you. We're ready to go. You can give us a number for the cost and how many you want to sell today, and I can have my team ready to go next week. So it's up to you guys.
Okay, so both, two of the options that were identified are viable. One is wait for the study. The other is change the rates right now, although that has cost implications for us, correct? Catherine, we have to change the signage.
I don't think the signage. Oh, it's all app-based. So you scan the QR code, you put in your parking zone or town, and the dropdown menu alludes to the price. So I don't believe signage would be impacted.
I'm sorry. Did I misunderstand you, Councilman Kraft? Are you talking about raising the daily rates next year?
Daily rates next year?
Yeah, not now, because we don't have signage.
Correct, don't have time right now.
What about the weekly rates? Is that part of your proposal? No.
Still not.
So.
Stay at 20.
225 for the non-resident passes at 1,700, is that your proposal?
That's my proposal.
Okay. Thank you.
Mary?
I'm opposed to creating any more hardship on our residents. We, as a council, work for the residents. We should be looking out for their best interests. I realize that people who come to our, come to our beach, spend money here, but in my opinion, we take care of our residents first. And if you can't find a parking place because you don't live here, help yourself. I'll give you a map to some other beaches you can go to. I absolutely do not support raising the number of passes. I do support raising the cost of those passes, and I really like my colleague's idea about looking toward getting rid of guest passes. That's all I'll say.
All right.
Just, I'll try to be brief. So last month, I had reminded counsel and the public that a season pass does not equal a parking space. I got a few emails about this topic, and everyone's concern was we're adding more non-resident parking spaces. We are not adding parking spaces tonight. We're simply making a decision on, following the vendor's recommendation, on their ability to sell season passes. And so for everyone that thinks that 2,000 season passes are going to show up every day or every Saturday or every Sunday and fight for 1,200 parking spaces, that's not what the statistics show us. And I wish Auto was here with their, all their data that showed the turnover and availability and the peak seasons and all of that. But as John pointed out, you know, the data suggest a different story than what people believe. I'll also point out that just because someone buys a season pass doesn't automatically mean they're here. What about the people that buy a season pass and never come? So the people that say, oh, well, we can make more money charging them $5 an hour than selling them $175 season pass. Well, if they bought a pass and they never use it, we made well more than $5 an hour on that person. And there are likely people that buy season passes and they may not use it for the season, or they use it one time, because we don't know. We don't have that level of detailed data. I think even Jim said, when they scan a tag, the only feedback is they have a valid permit. The feedback doesn't say, oh, this is a season pass holder who lives in Raleigh, and this is their fourth visit to Oak Island this year. That's not what the scan says. The scan says this vehicle has a permit to park in this spot. I also want to clarify that a season pass does not allow you to park in a resident spot. Resident spots are for resident permits only. And yes, we allow three per household or per water bill, right? There was a suggestion last year to try to lower that to two, and we decided to hold at three, right? And so we held at three for your water bill, and you're still only paying $10 per vehicle. So if you have three cars, that's $30 for the year to park. That's the best deal on the beach. I'm sorry, but I don't think any other beach is going to give you that deal. Furthermore, Councilman Chulo's data, what's the cap that you called other beaches? What do they cap out at? Their season passes stop at what? 1,000, 1,500, 2,000?
Many have no limit.
Oh, they have no cap? Wow, imagine that. Beaches selling season passes with no cap on the maximum, but yet we cap ours. So we are doing a service to residents by capping the number of season passes we sell. The first year, we sold 1,000. The second year, we went to 1,500. The data stayed the same. So, you know, I wanted to go from the very first day of paid parking to unlimited, but I agreed to 1,000, and then I agreed to 1,500. And so I think to Councilman Box's point, the data suggests, and Auto has suggested, that 2,000 is not going to be detrimental to our parking. The visitors are going to come park and find parking spaces, whether they have a season pass or whether they're paying by the hour, right? And so there's always going to be that challenge to find a parking space. And don't forget, residents can park in any parking space they want. You're not restricted to only finding a resident-only spot. You can park anywhere there's a valid parking space for only $10. That's a pretty good deal.
Otto's at the podium, I don't know if you.
Well, I was just going to comment, I don't have the data with me. I wish I did. But the majority of people who do purchase a season pass, I mean, it was absurd, like they came to the beach four times. So season passes really aren't used. It's more of a convenience for our community that maybe doesn't want to scan the QR code every time they come to the beach. It's more of a luxury, and it's really not used on a regular basis for, over the majority, like vast majority. I wish I had the numbers in front of me. I'm happy to send them out. I've already messaged my team earlier, so they're going to send them to me. I just don't have them right now.
Thank you for the input. And one last comment. When we added parking spaces a year ago, I think it was a year ago, we found additional spaces. Scott and his team went out and found more parking spaces. The council voted to add resident spaces at a higher percentage overall of finding additional spaces. So I would be supportive if the study comes back and says that there are 200 more spaces available. I'm all for making as many of those as we can resident spaces. I do not have an issue with that if the study finds more spaces.
So what I find ironic, that Auto Connect, great vendor, great partner, but there is undying trust that what they share with us is gospel. And the parking study company that we've hired, we're not even willing to wait a couple of weeks to find out what they show, what they share with us. Another vendor, let's give them a chance, and maybe we take them at gospel what they tell us, and maybe they find more spots, or maybe they don't find more spots. Maybe they find ways to reconfigure things. Our staff has done a great job putting down bumpers, but that's not what they do for a living. So if we hire a company that does this for a living, then they are experts in this matter, and let's at least wait a few weeks. If you can turn it on in a week and we vote next month, then we don't really, they don't lose anything other than front-ending some revenue. That's the only thing that's lost. Nothing else is lost. So again, I would keep my, stand by the motion. Let's wait a few weeks. But if we want to vote tonight, Councilman Kraft, I agree with you, standing by 1,500 non-resident passes and converting 200 of our existing spaces to additional resident parking. I would modify my motion.
And does that include increasing the price as well?
1,500.
No, the price.
225.
225.
25.
So do you want to amend, formally amend your motion?
I will amend my motion that we. Oh, I'm sorry.
We have a motion on the, we have a motion and a second on the floor. So should we, are you going to withdraw that, or, because that was to wait on the study?
Okay, I will withdraw that.
Motion.
Motion. And I would like to make a new motion, if that's okay. And my new motion would be that we stay with 1,500 non-resident passes. We increase the cost by $50 per non-resident pass. And this year, we do keep the bulk pass rates, and we increase those rates by $50 as well. Additionally, we take 200 of our existing spots. Additionally, we take 200 of our existing spots, and we convert those into resident parking.
Is there a second?
Well, I have a question. Why are we keeping the bulk program when Otto is recommending we not keep it? And there were 70 some odd sold.
Well, there were 78. And the 78 were purchased by two rental companies. So Pete's and, um, OKI. So those are the two companies who are actually doing it right. And all these other companies that are going around it, and they're using their neighbors' addresses. Instead of buying a bulk permit, they're just buying, they buy three, and then they use a neighbor to buy three, or two, or one, and then another neighbor to buy one or two. And they have their business, which is being run out of their house, is being split amongst 10 different neighbors, so they can rent golf carts out of their house.
The reason for that is so that the rental companies were not, uh, buying up non-resident.
No, I know there was a noble, noble intent. It's just, my point is it didn't work.
Well, I, I believe it did work. I believe it did work. It did what we want. For the two companies, the two largest companies that our residents and our guests rent carts from, they did the right thing, and they used the bulk permit process.
I meant the, the ultimate initial goal was to sell far more than 78.
Correct.
Kudos to our local folks for being honest, but that, that's not my point. My point is it didn't work as we intended. Otto's recommendation is to do away with it, that's all. I'm just curious why it's in the motion at all.
So there's a motion on the floor?
I, I will second Mr. Chulo's motion.
All in favor?
Question?
For the second?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep, we do have to have discussion. My clerk told me. Any additional discussion?
Just looking back through December's minutes that we just approved, it, it looks like there was a consensus from council to maintain the same rates this year as we had the prior two years, with Councilman Bach, Kraft, and Councilmember Carter all stating upfront that they want to keep the rates the same, as I read it. And then it says there was a consensus in favor of maintaining rates. So now all of a sudden, we're talking about increasing rates.
I, I will say, if that's how it reads, that was a mistake. My vote was to keep resident parking rates the same.
Can, can we ask our clerk?
There were two different, um, if you look at the agenda for last month, there were five, four or five points for, um, from Otto that were for consideration for council. The rates, the hourly and weekly rates were in item number one. And then the season passes and the cost for those passes were in another item. So the consensus, it is my opinion that the consensus was for item number one, for the rates. And then, although it was not specifically discussed, the cost for the season permits, the season permits were put onto this meeting as well.
Well, it indicates for item three, season permits was just the quantity. There's no conversation about.
Cost was not specifically addressed.
Rates. Rates were addressed under item one.
That was for resident parking. I went back and actually watched the video, and it was clear. The way I read it clearly in the minutes and clearly on the video, we were talking about resident parking only. We were not talking about non-resident. In fact, I tried multiple times to bifurcate the whole non-resident discussion and to push it to the following month. And Councilman Martin, Councilman Bach, I believe you both pushed back on it and said, we have this on the table, so we're going to go through it. So I attempted to, to, to keep it as clean as possible, and just to address resident parking, and then push non-resident parking for a separate conversation. But we certainly addressed resident parking only.
Well, that's not what's in the record.
So there's a motion on the table. Is council ready to vote?
Can you repeat the motion?
Yes, please.
Because I think the one to table, was that withdrawn?
It was withdrawn.
It was withdrawn. The motion is to cap season passes at 1,500, to increase the cost for season passes by $50, to keep the bulk rate passes and to increase that cost by $50, and to add 200 residence spaces.
How are we going to add 200 residence spaces?
It was to replace.
To replace.
200 spots that are not currently designated for residents and make them resident-only parking.
Adding 200 to the number of residence spaces.
That's correct. There's 1,100 non-resident spots now.
Where is, hold on, sorry. Where is the financial projection on that? Do, do we have one? When we take 200 offline, do we know?
1,500 at 225 is 337. And then depending on the number of bulk, if you sell another similar number of bulk.
Yeah, but there are 200 daily spaces that are no longer available as a revenue generator. Do we have any idea? Do we know?
No, I think the motion was to keep at 1,500 total passes. We just convert spaces.
No, the motion includes converting 200 spaces to resident.
Spaces to resident spaces, but.
Which means taking 200 hourly spaces offline.
Okay, so our, um, vendor stated, reinforced by Councilman Bach, that they can sell 2,000 non-resident passes, and that's not going to be a capacity. So I'm confused.
No, I'm not worried about capacity.
But if they're saying.
I'm worried about revenue.
But if they're saying that we have sufficient parking right, right now, we can add 500 non-resident passes, and we're still, we're still, everybody will still find a parking space. We take 200 spots and make them resident spots, they'll still be able to find places to park.
Yeah, but my concern is what does that do to the revenue projection? Because you're taking 200 spots offline.
Right, what's the average spot?
I don't know.
Wait, the revenue generated by a spot is what?
I have two thoughts. One, if someone's going to be inconvenienced, I don't want it to be an Oak Island resident. So if someone from out of town is inconvenienced because there's 200 spots less, I'd rather it be that person than someone from Oak Island. Secondly, 50 additional dollars at 1,500 passes is $75,000.
7,500.
7,500. That should offset some of the hourly parking that we're missing out on.
Which would be 2,000?
It's what, it's what we don't, it's frankly what we don't know. 200 spaces for the season, what does an average space generate? We have no idea. And I don't, Otto, Otto's not here. Oh, Otto's, do you have any?
That's, that's a shift ask for Oak Island, so what was going on? But I do think. I mean, it is, it is a loss.
I need you to be the microphone, come to the speak, please. Come to the mic, come to the podium, please.
Level, I took 1.2 million dollars, divided by 1,100 spaces. That's an average of $1,090 per space, times 200 spaces, we lose 218,181 dollars.
That math's not accurate. So it was 1.2 million.
It's back to the napkin.
1.2 million total, Mark. And that includes what the residents are paying. It includes, um, code or, uh, parking tickets. From paid parking alone, which I believe is what we're talking about, it's a third of that.
Well, I said it was high level. Unless we had the financial report from Otto in front of us, which we had last month, I, I can only do some guesstimating here.
Do you have a number or projection for us?
I'm waiting to hear back from Jim. I just reached out to him.
You guys have about 1,400.
Excuse me, you're out of order.
She works here, she works for Otto.
Oh, she worked for Otto?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead. Come to the microphone, please.
I'm one of the enforcement officers, and you have about 1,400 parking overall that we've accounted individually of going through and literally checking the parking spots. Roughly, I mostly do the pier area. So I see Barbie, uh, 604, that area more of the summertime. So I see two, over 200, sometimes 2,000 different cars, because going to the restaurant. The pier's not that big of a lot, so some people do have to pay to go to the pier. Fishermen pay, uh, every year, a seasonal permit through the pier here. And there's sometimes we see the same fishermen, maybe in the season. There's about 10 cars that I at least know off by heart the license plate just by seeing the vehicle after the second week of the season starting. Like, I know not a lot of us speak up and talk to council, but Bill does see me walking up and my associates up and down his street checking. Like, we try to help out as much as we can. And I know I don't try to do this because I'm not a public speaker, but I love coming. I do listen to the meetings every time it's on YouTube. And I appreciate everything, but we do try to help as much as we can on the ground. And the residents, morning and night, that's, you can park where, and as long as you're at the bumper, your permit's good, morning and night. Just make sure you're in a resident spot. That's the only time after nine, no, 5 to 9, we're only enforcing residents.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Do you want to cover? Want to go through this?
I have Jim's number. Okay, so moving.
Pull up some of last month's.
Oh, go, go ahead, yes.
Erica.
Mike? There we go. Okay, so according to Jim, to convert, I mean, essentially taking 200 spots offline is around 150K.
How much, say again?
You would be losing 150K.
150,000. So if we raise, if we stick with the $50 ra, increase in non-resident passing bulk passes, that gets us $79,000. So we're more than halfway there. So if I, if we, instead of a 200 passes, if this year, a 200 additional residence spaces being created, perhaps we lower it, make it revenue neutral to 100?
I, I'm the eternal optimist. I've driven around, 68th Street has five or six empty spots on the right side. They park on the left side, there's nothing on the right side. Into my street, Barbie, they park on the right side, they don't park on the left side. When that study comes back, again, I'm the eternal optimist. When that study comes back, those 200 spots that we took away, they're going to find us 100 or 150 of them. We don't need to panic.
I'll say this. If you're willing to shape your motion to be net neutral, which I think you were trying to do, Councilman Chulo, to get to 100 versus 200 coming offline, and we're net neutral, and we're giving the residents more, and our revenue projection is fairly consistent, I can support that. But I need you to put that in the motion, because we now have a number that we can rely on.
So you're wanting the motion to say, if the parking survey finds.
No.
Two spots.
I'm sorry, Councilman Kraft, no, I'm not saying that. I'm dealing with the, the present motion on the floor, which Councilman Chulo has indicated he's willing, may be willing to modify. Don't put words in his mouth. So if there were 100 additional spaces for residents, that means 100 are taken offline, all right? We would basically break even because we're charging the 1,500. Season passes, $50 more. It's a break even point, and then we wait for the study. You folks can figure it out next year. I can live with that. That, that's a sensible compromise.
Do you want to withdraw your former motion and make?
No, I want him to, if he's willing, he needs to amend his current motion rather than keep, put another one on the floor.
Hang on.
Hey, Lisa, we were, oh, good, Terry.
Now, now I'm going to become the mathematician, and that ought to scare everybody. The back of the napkin. If we sell 1,500 permits at 175, my calculator tells me that's 262.5. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Correct. If we sell 1,300 spaces, taking 200 offline at 225, we get 292.5. So we can reduce the number of spaces by 200, the number permits sold by 200, increase the cost by $50, and we'll still make more money than selling 1,500 at 175. If we meet in the middle and go to 1,400 spaces with 100 being sent over to resident only at 225, that's 315. That gets us almost up to 1,500.
337.
At, at 225.
Fine, I need somebody to verify the numbers that we're at a break even point. Because we're doing this back of the envelope, back of the napkin, I'm not sure.
1,500 at 225 is 337.5.
Well, John.
I think Catherine's running numbers, I just wanted something to be verified.
I trust her more than I trust mine.
Well, I've run three different scenarios, so. 1,500 at 225, correct, 337.5.
If the motion says not to exceed net neutral, right? Then how we allocate spaces and how much money that is, we don't have to worry about the back of the napkin.
That would be another way to go, but that's not the motion on the floor.
Correct.
No, plus, that's a, that's a lot of unknowns. I think we have an opportunity now to be as precise as possible and not leave it up to luck and happenstance.
If, if you're trying to make up $150,000, then that means you have to go to 1,700 seasonal passes at 225, and that gives you an extra $120,000, because that's $382,000 in revenue. So you're going backwards to try to get to net neutral, and that's the wrong calculation.
Where, where are you getting the 150 that we're trying to make up?
That's what Otto just said. She said Jim said, if you take 200 spaces offline, you're going to lose $150,000 in revenue. So that's the number we need to find. Where can we find $150,000 to be neutral? Well, 1,700 season passes gets you to 382, which is 120. You're $30,000 short of being net neutral.
I need somebody to explain, I need someone to explain the math to me, because 200 spaces times 175, our current rate is $35,000. Where's the other 120?
The rate goes to 225. So put in 1,700 times 225.
I'm perfectly capable, Mr. Martin, thank you.
Well, you said math wasn't your strong form, so I'm just.
Math wasn't my strong.
I'm being helpful. I'm not being insulting.
Very unprofessional.
200 times 225, excuse me, 200 times 225 is 45,000. Where's the additional 105,000 that we're missing?
Are you asking me?
Yeah, you said Jim said 150. I'm accounting for 45 of that by taking 200 spaces offline at 225 per permit.
No.
Because Jim's number is based on turnover at an hourly rate, not a season pass.
Got you.
Okay.
It's a hunting permit, not a parking.
And I'm sorry, that's not being unprofessional. It's helping reconcile numbers here.
Hold on, folks, let's all stick on. We're trying to get to net neutral, right? And so we, we know what, taking 200 spaces offline in the daily parking rate, what the loss would be, would be 150. How do we make that up? In part, by charging more for season passes, right? And by dedicating fewer, not the 200, Councilman Kraft proposed, but 100. That was Mr. Chulo's motion that got us to net neutral, which I said I would support. I think, I think those numbers are valid and can be validated.
Well, so according to Jim, the numbers that you have are based off of, I'm making sure I say this right, gross revenue, not net to the town. So it's gross revenue, not net to the town. So there's still a, a difference there.
No, it actually, because it is gross, not net, that would actually, our hit would actually be less than that. Not a $150,000 hit, that's a $150,000 gross.
All right, we have a motion on the table. We either withdraw it or amend it.
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
Just blow the top off of it. I'm not opposed to charging more than 225 to non-residents. If that satisfies anybody, making up for potential lost revenue by giving residents more spaces. more spaces. My guess is, you don't like coming to the beach here, go to another beach and park.
Some more quick math. So if we only take 100 spaces offline, so if we give residents an additional 100 spaces, still sell 1,500 season passes at the increased rate of 225, we cover the loss. That is net neutral. But you can only give 100 additional spaces to resident.
That was the motion.
And that's your net neutral position, is 1,500 season passes at 225 buys you those 100 spaces being converted to resident-only.
That was Councilman Chulo's suggestion. I'm just asking him to put it in the motion.
Right, it's not in the motion.
I'm in the motion.
Let me get one more understanding in. I'm in agreement with everybody. I came here tonight to get more additional spots for Oak Island residents. On a scale of 1 to 10, 7 is a whole lot better than 1. So if we go to 100, I can live there. But appease me. I'm still the optimist. The survey company's going to come back with more than 100 spots. Let the residents have the first 50 of that increase, and then split it 50/50 from there. Appease me.
Well.
If it happens.
Well, we don't, the fact of the matter is, we don't know what they're going to come back with. It could be up, it could be down, and as Councilman Chulo's PowerPoint demonstrated, there are lots of questions. So, if we're going to modify something substantially, I support charging non-residents for season passes more, as long as we get to net neutral, which I think we can, or within, you know, de minimis amount, right? And we're talking millions of dollars, if it's $10,000, I can live with that. So, but that takes cutting the return to residents from 200 to 100. That makes it all work.
He's already agreed to do that. So we just need to get it into the motion.
I will. If he can figure out how to work.
All right, you've got the floor.
Okay. So I'd like to amend the motion to 1,500 non-resident parking passes at $225 apiece, to keep the bulk parking at an additional $50 per bulk parking pass.
So that's 375.
To, uh, to 375. To increase by 100 the number of resident parking spaces.
So that we're net neutral.
And that would get us to that net neutral level.
I'll second that.
I think we can.
Does it need to be re-seconded?
Mayor? Yeah, Mayor, if, if it's an amendment, then the original seconder needs to agree with the amendment, otherwise it needs to be withdrawn, but-
Okay, so the original second.
Okay.
Is that you, Terry?
Terry.
Otherwise, it could be withdrawn and then have a new motion.
Exactly. Okay, thank you for that.
Yeah, for the, for the purposes of any further discussion, I will second the motion.
Just for clarification, did you say 1,500 or 1,600?
1500.
Okay. That's what I thought you heard, then. I couldn't-
And the discussion I would like to have is, I would ask the manager to verify the numbers that Mr. Martin provided for net neutral. Because he also is not a mathematician.
Can you do that? On the back of a napkin?
Why?
I think we have.
Okay, so we have a motion. It's seconded, we've had-
Right.
Discussion over two meetings. May I ask, Madam Mayor, you call the vote.
I'm calling the vote. The failsafe is in the net neutral, even if the numbers aren't exact. All in favor?
Roll call vote on this, Madam Mayor. Please.
Yes, that's fine. What's the net neutral language?
I wanted to, yeah, I wanted to clarify that, because to say that it just needs to be net neutral, to me, it's kind of not specific enough.
That was, that was not, I would not want to put that in the motion. I wouldn't put that as descriptive for our conversation, but not in the motion.
That can be reflected in the minutes, that the goal was to get to net neutral.
That's correct, that's our goal.
Yeah, because net neutral could end up being 96 spaces to residents instead of 100. We don't want, just say 100 and be done.
Yeah, we could end up, we could end up, you know-
We've got a motion on the floor, I'm calling the vote.
Please.
Mark?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Bill?
It's taken us 13 months to live out the definition of compromise. Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
John?
Yes. I've already-
I just want to comment as a, this is more than just about numbers.
Amen.
It's also about relationships, and the relationships that this body has with our community, with our residents. So I applaud council for finding that middle ground, and appreciate your ability to compromise. Next, under all business, is consideration of action on a proposed text amendment to
Good evening, everyone. Somebody's gotten my clicker. Who has the-
Oh, it's down here.
Pass down.
As you may recall, we had a public hearing on this item last month, so I'll keep my comments fairly brief about these proposed changes. I do have a couple of updates that are reflected in your agenda packet that I'll touch on in the presentation, but if you'll indulge me, I'll move through these slides pretty quickly, because this is similar to what we, most of the slides are the same as what we talked about last month. So the background on this project, the Cape Fear Council of Governments audited our Unified Development Ordinance and recommended several priorities. Council recommended the planning board review these, their recommended priority item number five, which looked at modernizing the Table of Permitted Uses. The planning board worked through that over some time. Council reviewed some of these recommendations in October and November, and you held a public hearing in December at your regular meeting on this proposed text amendment. Touching very briefly on what these items are, the Table of Uses and Activities, details land use categories, and which zoning districts allow those uses, broken down into permitted uses, permitted with supplemental regulations, special uses, or special uses with supplemental regulations. And the supplemental regulations are different, are additional specific regulations beyond the typical performance standards that all development has to meet.
Matt?
Yes.
If I can stop you for a minute. We're, we're going to take a quick break.
Okay.
And be back as soon as, as soon as we're able.
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
Thank you.
All right, we're back from that quick break. Thank you for your patience, and Matt?
Thank you, Mayor.
Carry on.
We'll get some, get some stuff going again. Here we go. Okay, so Table of Uses, everybody's seen this slide from last month. Zoning District's at the top, uses listed on the left-hand column, whether or not they're permitted is in those little boxes in the table. Sure you guys have seen this many times, the Town of Oak Island zoning map, so you cross-reference your zoning district with the table to determine whether or not certain uses are permitted in your specific zoning district. So a very important interrelation there between the two things. The planning board recommended consolidating several uses, in addition, changing some, yes, changing some designations within the table, and removing use categories that are covered by general statute, so if we had a general statute reference, there was no need to duplicate that within the, within, within the table. And the intent here was to, like I said, by and large, consolidate uses. So if we had a bunch of very similar uses that could be categorized together, and there was no impacts that the planning board could identify within the specific uses, well, let's call it all one thing, instead of having, you know, many different office categories, let's just call every office an office instead. So in addition, the recommendations included classification for new supplemental regulations for many of the uses within the table, including some examples here on the screen. Once again, we covered these last month, so I'll kind of skip through this. And then finally, new definitions were added where the Unified Development Ordinance didn't adequately define uses. So, what has happened in the interim? Since all that's happened, Senate Bill 382 was passed by the North Carolina General Assembly, and tucked into that, that bill was a restriction towards local governments initiating and enacting downzoning without the written consent of all property owners in a district. So if you're going to do anything that constitutes downzoning, you can do it, but everybody in the district has to written, has to provide you written consent. I can't just call and say, hey, Madam Mayor, do I care if I downzone your property? You got to actually provide it to me, which is a pretty big challenge when you have potentially several thousand property owners within a district. But it restricts a few things, and I've kind of summarized these. So it restricts both map amendments and text amendments. So when a lot of people think about downzoning, they think about taking a certain piece of property and changing it from residential to conservation, something like that. But also, the, the way this bill was worded, it includes regulatory reform, so changing the way a district is regulated may constitute downzoning. Reducing permitted uses, so if you substantially reduce the uses, or substantively reduce the uses within a zoning district, that can be considered downzoning. So if I, you know, if the local government has a district where restaurants are permitted, and they want to change the, say restaurants are no longer permitted in this district, that can constitute a downzoning, because you've removed that permitted use. Reducing development density, you typically see that in residential zoning, where you might have a certain density allotment for a piece, for zoning type, just by way of example, let's say you had a multifamily zoning district that allowed 15 dwelling units per acre, reducing that to 12 units per acre could constitute a downzoning. And then finally, creating non-conformities in areas that are not zoned residential. This is an especially tricky one, where you have a built-out commercial district, maybe those buildings are very old and were designed under old zoning regulations. If you're going to create non-conformities as a part of your, as a part of your regulatory reform, once again, all the property owners in that district have to provide you written consent in order to do that. So very challenging to deal with from a planning, zoning, land use aspect, be able to deal with, to be frank, we, this was kind of enacted pretty quickly, and so really a lot of planning jurisdictions are dealing with the repercussions of this ongoing. So, what staff did was go ahead and identify some instances in the Table of Uses that could be constituted as downzoning, and we wanted to pull those out and give you an opportunity to still approve what the planning board recommended, minus some things that might run afoul of that Senate Bill 382. So we took a look. In addition, you received some feedback today, I believe, from a concerned citizen, so I've added a little bit about that on the next slide. This is what's in your agenda packet now, so we identified some potential downzonings here. Schools were permitted in some residential districts, the planning board recommended removing those, that would constitute a downzoning. Religious institutions being reclassified into a special use with supplemental regulations in residential areas. Currently, we allow for a community or municipal sewage and water treatment plants in all residential districts. If you were to remove that, that would constitute a downzoning. Country clubs removed from R9, nursing homes removed from some residential districts, and hotels and motels changed to a special use with supplemental standards in the CLD. This was supposed to be a last bullet, and then automobile, parking garages or parking lots independent, being changed to a SS, or to a special use with supplemental regulations in the CB. Some of this has to do with creating legal non-conformities, so where we have some of these things, like automobile parking garages or parking lots, we have a private parking lot right on East Oak Island Drive. If you change that to a special use, and that's, they don't have a special use permit, then you've created a legal non-conformity for that use, so definitely a challenge there. In addition, this one, this one was a little tricky. There was a, the, the planning board's recommendation was to essentially consolidate all offices under a blanket office use. That included contractors' offices, so like if you got a heating and air office, or a, you know, general contractor office. That was considered one use, and then contractor's office with open storage was considered another use. That was pretty consistent with what was already in the Table of Uses now, mostly in the CB zoning district on the island. The contractor's office with no outside storage was a permitted use. And for the most part, a contractor's office with open storage was not permitted, except for one, and that was heating and air conditioning installation offices. So there's a couple of options you could have there. One would just be to keep contractor's office with open storage as a special use, knowing they still have to come before you to get a special use permit. Alternatively, you could just leave the heating and air conditioning installation entry in the table as it sits right now. Either option would be viable to avoid a downzoning, because you still, those other uses aren't affected, their category is the same, pre and post. The only one that we found that would be affected was that heating and, heating and air conditioning installation.
So these are the changes you've already removed?
These are ones I recommend, these are, what, council would have to make a motion to adopt with these additional-
With these changes?
Yes, ma'am.
And are the ones we, the two we received today among?
That, that's the, is right, on this slide right here.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, good.
Sorry for the confusion on that.
No, 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 I just wanted to, to be assured.
I'm sorry. Madam Mayor, could you repeat your question? I didn't quite hear it.
I asked whether the exceptions, the things that he's removed, is reflected in this document.
Okay. May I ask a question?
Sure.
So we, the entirety of council, the manager, and I think you as well, received an email from a prominent builder, is that, that, this is the response?
This slide right here, yes, sir.
Okay, that's, wanted to be clear.
Yes, sir. So there was a concern about general contractor's office, in that, once again, we don't feel that, you know, should you either exclude, keep the heating and air conditioning installation category the same, or keep contractor's office with open storage as a special use, either option keeps you from downzoning those properties, because currently a general contractor's office with open storage is not permitted, or for some reason, that one example for heating and air conditioning has a special use on it, so.
That does not put that particular business in a future non-conforming situation.
No, sir. No, sir. That's right. The second point that was brought up in your, the email that you received and the staff reviewed, was questioning private recreation facilities, specifically in the CLD district. The planning board had recommended making that a special use in the CLD district. However, there are a couple that are, that are currently permitted, they're just listed as a P on the table. So in order to avoid that being a downzoning, keeping that as just a P, permitted use in the CLD, would certainly get at that. And the final note, this one, you could kind of argue either way, in my opinion. There are some categories in the table that the planning board recommended establishing supplemental regulations for. You've seen that, there's several new sections listed in there, there's some that have an S on there. However, this council has not even gotten to the supplemental regulations yet. So in my opinion, if you adopt the table as is, and there's no supplemental regulations that have been established yet, then the regulations are the same as they are right now. So substantively, you haven't changed the way that, that property is developed. However, if you want to be absolutely 100%, you know, you know, consistent with that, you could also recommend that the new supplemental regulations, designations not be adopted as a part of what council wants to send, and then we could adopt them later when you're actually ready to adopt supplemental regulations. So I hope that hasn't been too confusing. But like I said, even if you adopt, even if you add those sections listings in the table, if those sections don't exist yet, you haven't really changed anything until you move to adopt those supplemental regulations. So I think it'll be safe either way, but certainly it'll be clearer if you were to- not establish the supplemental regulations sections now, wait until you're ready to actually establish those, and kind of adopt a clean table of uses at this point. So hopefully, I've explained all that. I realize it's kind of a lot, and like I said, many jurisdictions are still kind of grappling with how to move forward with this stuff. So the recommended motion from staff would be to adopt the proposed amendments, except those that were identified as being put in violation of Senate Bill 382. So all those things I just covered with you, those would not change in the table, that they would remain as we describe them to you here. And that should keep us clear of potential violations of that new Senate Bill 382, in our opinion.
Are there questions for Matt?
Yes, Matt, I have a question. It's, I'm on page 23 in the agenda packet, and it's where you list the seven items that are now under consideration, or part of 382. I just want to make sure that I understand. Item number two, changed to an SS, or recommended change to an SS by the planning board. So if we take that supplemental regulation away, does that mean that that now goes back to a special use permit?
Well, if, anything that has the first S in it needs a special use permit, whether it has a supplemental regulation or not. So I think the, the question here is, did it change from a P to a S? So did it change from a permitted use to a special use? If the answer to that question is yes, then that likely constitutes a downzoning.
What I'm trying to get at is, we, we know we have, we can't put any teeth into deciding special use permits. By creating supplemental regs, we can do that. But now, if we're in violation of 382, and we have to take that supplemental reg away, does that mean for these items that are proposed as SS, they go back to special use permits? And so, we have to deal with that again?
Well, you would have to deal with a special use permit, whether there's supplemental regulations or not, if it's listed as a special use. If it's an SS or an S in the table, then the applicant must receive a special use permit in order to establish that use. Now, you've, if you add the second S, you've added some supplemental, like you just mentioned, you've added some additional regulations that they have to jump through. But they still must qualify for a special use permit. I hope that answered your question.
Any other questions for Matt?
Matt, my understanding from some individuals I spoke to and I've read, that when the General Assembly reconvenes later this month, there's a very high likelihood they're going to reverse the positions they took about on this section of 382. So if that's the case, how quickly would we be able to bring these back that we're now taking off the table? Would it just simply be the following council meeting, we could add it back to our agenda?
That's kind of an interesting question. I would recommend, you know, if these things aren't adopted now, I don't know, that's maybe a court lawyer question, whether it has to go back to the planning board again, if they've already received a recommendation once and we just didn't adopt it.
I mean, you know, to your, to your point you're bringing up, I mean, I'm sure you all know this, this 382 is creating havoc in planning boards across the state. But I, I have not heard, in my different CLDs I've been at, or programs, maybe that Matt's been at, I haven't heard anyone suggest that they're gonna undo the whole thing. I think it's gonna be some kind of a piecemeal approach, and all of the advice that we're giving all of our towns is to do exactly what you all are doing tonight. Try to pull out what you think might run afoul of SB 382. But, you know, be prepared, and, and you know, and if there is some kind of a, if they do undo something, they'll probably provide some, they may provide some guidance in it for a savings cause, or a reversion cause of some sort.
I think, I think if anything's not adopted tonight, to your question about how quickly it could be brought up if something's changed, I think the safe thing would be, you know, from a process standpoint, to just take it back to the planning board for a recommendation one more time, and then come back to town council. But we, all this material's ready, we can do that very quickly. That would not take much turnaround time, that's our.
We can only hope.
Yes, sir.
So council, do we have a motion? It's on the screen for anyone who wants to make it.
I'll make the motion to adopt the proposed amendments, except for those that were identified as being in violation of Senate Bill 382.
Deacon.
All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much. As is all too, too often the case, when we did administrative reports, I forgot the town attorney. So Lydia, my apologies. And you're on.
I just had something very brief to, to tell the council about. Over the last month and a half or so, the town has been served with two separate lawsuits, not related, but two separate lawsuits. And the, our firm, and actually Norwood Blanchard is actually gonna be handling these. But we've been looking at them and responding to them, and, you know, I can tell you more about them at a later time. I just wanted to kind of tell you that these two had come through. I can say the names of them if you'd like. Catherine, do you, do you want me to say the names of them?
Whatever publicly.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I mean, they're, they're, you know, well, one is a, one is a suit entitled Nigel Edge versus USA and seven different defendants. The other is Pointer versus Oak Island. And we'll be following up on these and be reporting to you as, as they move along, so.
Thank you for that.
These aren't personnel issues?
No.
And, and one was from several years ago.
And one is a, what we know, what's known as a pro se kind of complaint against several different defendants. But I just, I feel I need to inform you whenever there's a suit filed against the town, so.
Thank you. Next, under all the businesses consideration of the unified development ordinance priorities, on page 131. Matt, do you want to give us the overview there?
I will be glad to. Get to my, bear with me while I scroll through all my stuff. Okay. So, it's kind of a similar background to what we just talked about, so I won't belabor it. We had a Cape Fear Council of Governments Audit UDO. Council, last month, also discussed setting priorities going forward after completion of item five. Item five is the table of uses that we, we just dealt with partially, and you're gonna continue the discussion around supplemental regulations next Tuesday. But it bears discussing, you know, what do we want to tackle next, as we continue to amend the UDO, to try to make a better, more usable document for everyone involved. So I, at the request of council, I'm not gonna go through the whole thing here, the staff provided a brief analysis of the remaining priorities from the Council of Governments, as well as some of the topics that had been discussed in previous workshop sessions, as well as some recommended priorities, taken into account, some of the things we just talked about with Senate Bill 382 and other ongoing processes. And the crux of that, also the planning board weighed in in December with their recommendations on priority items going forward. So staff recommended a few priorities, and really, the staff recommendation starts on page 135 of your agenda packet. So items two and nine from the Council of Governments, recommended priorities, can, in staff's opinion, be done in one effort. So we organize the existing dimensional standards. If anybody's ever looked through our UDO, you kind of have a table for each district, and that's kind of an unusual setup. Usually have one table with every district listed. But also review our setback exceptions. This is a constant source of confusion among citizens, you know, because we have a kind of large section of setback amendments that, or exceptions, sorry, that can get a little wordy, and a lot of times, these, you know, these things aren't revealed until late in the project, and then the applicant's coming in for a variance or an appeal at the Board of Adjustment. So that would be one recommendation. Item seven in the Council of Governments, recommendations, mostly dealt with public-private street standards and adoption standards. However, we even heard tonight from our consultant that did our snapshot on code enforcement violations, and councils talked in the past about potentially reviewing our right-of-way standards going forward. So to me, that also sounds like one effort, where we look at street adoption, private, public street standards, but also our right-of-way standards for those streets. You know, what do we want to see in those? And that, in staff's opinion, that could be consolidated into one effort as well.
When will that endeavor begin?
Well, that, that's what we're here to find out tonight. And you might disagree with me, and that's okay. This, this, these are recommendations from staff, so staff, council can certainly, you know, take a different tact on any of these. The, the next item we recommended was potentially discussion, discussing home occupation standards. That's been a topic that was talked about a lot in our workshop sessions going forward. And the benefit of this item is, planning board's already made some recommendations to you through the supplemental regulations. So this, that item wouldn't even need to go back to planning. We could kind of jump right into that recommendation and start that discussion, whenever the council felt it was appropriate. And then item three, this also got touched on a lot in the workshop sessions, I feel like, was, what do we do about parking in, on the commercial corridor through town, the community business zoning district? That's certainly a priority from a land use standpoint. That being said, we're working with Withers Revno, who is doing our comprehensive land use plan, they have landscape architects that are working on a corridor study there. So I would like to consider that a priority, but maybe consider holding, holding that discussion until we see that streetscape master plan, because that might tell us what that parking needs to look like going forward. We can make a better, more informed decision going forward. So I realize I've thrown a lot at you there. I've laid out on page 136 of your agenda packet, some potential ways that you can make this all work, because like, some things need to go to the planning board first, some things don't, some things probably need a council discussion before we even start them up. But we're happy to, you know, talk through any other priorities you might have, or receive any feedback, or how and when you, you might want to get started on this effort going forward.
So Matt, do you have a suggestion for how we approach this, or do you have recommendations for ordering these, or some more?
136.
Seeing than others? 136. Got it.
Bottom 135 and 136. And I was just gonna say thank you. I asked you about providing a document that breaks this down a little more. You did a fantastic job, and I, for one, am perfectly fine to follow your suggested. I think it all makes sense, it's very logical. It allows us to wait on information from other, other things that we're waiting on, and yet allows the planning board to have some things to work on now, anyway, in the meantime.
Tried to balance it out between items that we've already talked about, some things that we haven't talked about, and some that kind of need some more discussion and study. So thank you for that, ma'am.
Yeah, I, I would agree with Councilmember Carter. I'm in favor of following your recommendations. I think you've laid out the timeline really well, and you've logically introduced steps where we have to collect some more data, and then we get to make a decision. So I'm, I'm very happy with your recommendations, from my point of view.
I concur with my colleagues, although I, I will say I'm disappointed that we're hamstrung by 382 in dealing with signage. It's ridiculous. It's terrible legislation, leads to terrible outcomes on the ground here. But that being said, you did a fine job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt, am I to interpret page 136, item seven? Month one, hold town council workshop to discuss and receive feedback for right-of-way standards for public streets. That could consist of gravel in the right-of-way?
It could consist of any topic, for any item in the right-of-way.
That can consist of little boys playing basketball on the street, not pulling their basketball, go back to the garage by themselves?
If that's a topic that council is concerned with, absolutely, yes, sir.
I was just wondering when I get to have that discussion, okay.
We're, we're trying to advance it for you, yes, sir.
I would say, the Alliance gentlemen gave us a pathway, right? Deal with the high, and hopefully, the low rectifies itself, or we do some of that, but we need to focus on the high, and we clearly have an automotive obstruction in the right-of-way problem, right? And we know that, we see it. That needs to be dealt with. And then a junk problem. And then, lastly, kids playing stick ball, basketball, whatever they're playing.
Walker Jenkins made it to the pros as a baseball player. I'd like to see a little kid make it to the pros as a three-point basketball shooter. He needs to practice.
I'd better get some more kids on the court here, because I don't see that many.
Do we have, do we have a motion, council?
Do we need an official motion? I mean, I'm happy to do so.
Captain's report.
Support town planners' recommendations for proceeding.
I'll second.
All in favor? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Move on to new business, finally. Review of major subdivision preliminary plat, referred to as Waterside at Oak Island. Matt, do you want to introduce that?
Done with me yet. Appreciate your patience, working through all this, this evening. So as the mayor just mentioned, you have a major subdivision preliminary plat review in front of you for a project called Waterside at Oak Island. I'll set some of the, the stage for you today. I believe some representatives from the project are here as well, and I'm sure they'd love to, to talk about the project with you. I think they have some slides for you as well. So, the town has received a major subdivision preliminary plat. This is kind of the first step in subdividing a piece of property, is the preliminary plat. The proposed project is located on North Carolina 211, Brunswick County Tax Parcel 20300030. As with any development project, we circulated this for regulatory comments throughout several agencies through the town, as well as some outside agencies as well. Utility departments, Army Corps of Engineers, DOT, DEQ. All relevant regulatory comments have been addressed, and the proposed site plan meets the requirements of the ordinance. Now, this is a preliminary plat. This is an administrative approval with no discretionary standards. So you're all very familiar with quasi-judicial, from having to go through special use permit hearings. Those are quasi-judicial, because there are discretionary standards. You get to decide what harmony means, things of that nature. This is even more narrow than that. It's basically a yes or no question, does it meet the ordinance or not? And then, of course, you have rezonings, which are even broader than those two. But this is an administrative approval, so should they meet the, the baseline criteria of the ordinance, they are entitled to their permit. Some background on the project, it's currently zoned CLD, it's commercial low-density, and it's regulated by a special use permit. We'll take a look at that master plan in just a second here. The parcel for subdivision is located within area D, E, and F of the planned unit development. Areas D and E were, were originally permitted for attached or detached single-family residential, so this would have allowed for a townhome-style development. And area F was permitted as a detached single-family residential. But the applicants only proposed single-family, and there's no proposed townhome lots here. They proposed creating 282 single-family residents for a gross project density of 1.73 dwelling units per acre. The maximum, the project average density was permitted at 5.8 units per acre, with a maximum threshold of 719. So when we look at the plan, you'll see this is a portion on their project, but they've still got quite a few under their approval that could be done in a future phase. The proposed building height is a maximum of 35 feet, consistent with the town ordinances. The site is not within a special flood hazard area on our flood study maps. The proposal includes approximately 56.93 acres of open space, which is about 35% of the site. In addition, it would save approximately 39.75 acres of wetlands, as well as 17.18 acres of kind of, of general open space, which is typically clear land, amenity areas, things like that, that are just preserved for the, the neighborhood. The proposed project does include public streets. We, of course, circulate that with the Town Public Works Department, as well as the Fire Department for Compliance. that with the town public works department, as well as the fire department for compliance with town street standards and fire code requirements. It's found to be compliant. The site includes stub outs to the east and the south, as required by the approved master plan. And the site development data indicated connectivity ratio within the development of 1.47, which exceeds the town's minimum requirements. And finally, public utilities in this area are provided by Brunswick County. Finally, from DOT, the proposed project does require a driveway permit from the North Carolina Department of Transportation for access along 211. And DOT looks at driveway permits to determine what type of improvements are necessary through a corridor. So whether you have to do a turn lane or, or some other type of improvement out there, they evaluate that through the, the permitting process there. This is in your agenda packet as well. This is the planned unit development master plan. As I mentioned, the proposals on, sits on parts D, E, and F of this master plan. So those bottom portions there, A, B, and C would be developed as a future phase. And then here we see the actual subdivision preliminary plat laid out here, stub out to the south and to the east as well. It's a connection up to North Carolina 211. And it's also included in your agenda packet as well. So the recommendation from staff and from the planning board is to approve the proposed major preliminary subdivision plat for Waterside at Oak Island. As I mentioned, project representatives are here as well, and I believe they have some presentation materials for you that they'd like to go through. Yep.
Connects in. All right. Thank you very much, Matt, for the introduction. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor White, and council members and town staff for your time this evening. My name's Nathan Allen. I'm with CLD Engineering in Wilmington. And we are representing our client, Draypack Partners, for the proposed preliminary plat of Waterside at Oak Island. Also with me tonight is one of our engineers, Jay Carmine. And if there's any more technical engineering or stormwater questions that I can't particularly answer, answer adequately for you, we'll be able to step up here and take care of that, hopefully. So, right here is our project site. It's located just north of Oak Island. You can see here with its proximity to St. James and with Southport and Boiling Springs to the east. We'll zoom in more, a little closer to the property here. You can see the parcel as it is right now with an existing gravel driveway that led down to the previous sand mining operations and logging operations of the property throughout time. Going back through historical satellite images, the entire parcel, with the exception of some of the wetland areas, has been logged. And looking at those images, it seemed like it happened somewhere between 2009, 2010, 2011. The proposed site sits conveniently fronts on Highway 211, approximately three quarters of a mile west of the intersection of Highway 211 Midway Road, which serves as a directly accessible route to both 17 and Oak Island. Property, as Matt mentioned, is zoned CLD, has been previously approved as a planned unit development, which would allow a single-family, multifamily, and mixed-use development here. We believe that this type of development is in line with the nature of the area's current zoning, serving as a nice transition zone between the commercial corridor and the rural residential places reflected in the existing zoning. Parcel's existing neighbors are predominantly residential, county residential, Oak Island residential around its edges, and some of the smaller business-type uses, commercial, commercial low density along the 211 frontage. The largest undeveloped tracts of property that back up to this one are zoned R7 and R20. The proposed site is made up of a single 162-acre parcel that was originally approved back in September of 2015. At that time, known as Piney Grove, as a planned unit development under special use permit master plan that was shown here and we already saw. The master plan specified the types of uses and densities that could occur throughout the property. As Matthew mentioned, also, D, E, and F are the areas that we're proposing tonight under the single-family development, Waterside. Areas A, B, and C, up at the top there, were originally planned to be more increased density with some apartments at the time or town home uses with some commercial. Waterside at Oak Island proposes a total of 282 single-family detached units for a total density of 1.73 units per acre. Typically, on this plan, the lots are going to be 60 by 120 feet, 7200 square feet. On average throughout the site, turned out to be about 8,300 square feet per parcel. The project has required 24.31 acres of open space. Waterside at Oak Island will boast 70 acres of open space, including nearly 40 acres of wetlands. For the most part, being left completely undisturbed, the only disturbances to the wetlands will be for the main entry road coming into the neighborhood, and those are very minimal, kept under a half an acre. The remaining almost 40 acres of open space will include passive open space areas and active open space areas. The existing lake, which is right here on the plan, will serve as a nice amenity for the neighborhood going forward in the future, things like possible multi-use paths around the pond. There'll also be an amenity area just north of that. Also included will be a, with the PUD, is a 25-foot vegetated buffer that wraps around the entire property. Moving on to some of the utilities here, stormwater will be collected in a storm drain system routed to the wet detention basins. Those are shown, one, two, three, four additional wet detention basins that will be added, including the existing lake there. In compliance with NCDEQ stormwater requirements, the wet detention basins are designed to capture and treat a minimum of the first 1.5 inches of rainfall and designed to attenuate the post-development discharge below the pre-development discharges for a minimum of the 25-year storm event. The storm drain system itself will be designed to carry the 25-year storm event, and it is also being evaluated for the 100-year storm event to ensure that no adjacent structures or lots would be negatively impacted. The ponds will be designed in such a way that they can safely route the 100-year storm event without adversely affecting the subdivision or joining properties. Scroll down here. The existing offsite drainage patterns will also be maintained through the site to provide hydraulic outlets as necessary for surrounding properties. Later on in the presentation, I'll show you some actual Google Earth images that point out those existing drainage patterns from adjacent properties outside of ours. So throughout the process in this plan, those will remain unaffected, thus allowing stormwater and drainage to flow through the property as it is right now. Our engineer has been in contact with the town's stormwater director, and we expect to have the plans ready for submittal in the next two weeks or so. Utilities for the project being provided by Brunswick Water and Sewer. Design for this is final, and these plans are currently in review with Brunswick County as of mid-December 2024. Sanitary sewer on the site is predominantly gravity sewer throughout the neighborhood, with a proposed sewer pump station centrally located that will take the sewer and force it up a main, back out to the frontage on 211, where it will connect with the existing storm, or the existing sewer systems. Connectivity-wise, there is a single access point to the development that will be provided off Highway 211 and two future connections. Those are shown to the east and to the south. A TIA was completed and approved in January 4th of 2022 and includes the potential full buildout of 719 units. An NCDOT driveway permit was issued May 30th, 2023, and roadway improvements, as specified in the TIA report, are currently underway for this project. This pretty much wraps up what we presented to planning board about a month ago. After our, the meeting concluded, when we got back, we received some input from the town and planning staff that there was a board member that wasn't able to make it to the meeting that day, but he did have some comments that he wanted to address. So I've added some additional information here. Let me get it pulled up.
Before you leave this slide, if you could, so the two arrows, the yellow arrows, what, tell us again what that represents?
Those represent future connection points. In the event that the neighboring parcels decide to develop their properties in the future, I don't know if it's mandated or if it's just, those developments would have to use those connections. Thus providing more, you know, a better circulation of traffic in and around the parcels.
With just those?
Interconnectivity.
Just the one, one single road for egress?
At this point, yes.
For 719 homes. Is that correct?
Yes.
Does your stub outs for, is that phase two? Or is that just when the other subdivisions do their developing?
No, that is, that, that's for this proposed development right now, for the preliminary plat we have in front of you tonight.
So when people have the fear there's only one ingress and one egress, in due time, there will be three?
That's the intent of the plan and why the county, right, you know, the ordinance specifies that we add those into development so that if, in the future, as we move along, more development comes to this area, that that, there is that capability and infrastructure to do so.
But the 298 units is the one rolled in and one rolled out?
Yes.
So the two arrows, again, just to, maybe I misheard you, sir. So future development, and they may or may not have egress onto 211, other than simply coming through this neighborhood. Is that accurate?
No, I believe, if there was future development by other property owners.
Yes.
I believe they would be at that time required to have their own direct access. Maybe Matt could weigh in a little bit on that. Essentially, they're, do you understand what they're asking?
Yeah. So, yes, most, most developers are not going to come in and want, say, this adjacent property to the east. The point is pointing this way. They're not going to want somebody to drive through another subdivision to get to their subdivision. But we're going to require them to hook into there, while they also may have an access on Middleton or another one on 211 or another way to get into the property. This just increases the interconnectivity through this area, in addition to any, you know, main subdivision entrances they, they might have to install for, for their development. So it's basically a way to ensure that that street network gets built out to provide that interconnectivity and to provide additional accesses. Because those are, obviously, these guys don't have site control over those other properties. So we have to wait for those development proposals to come online in order to continue that road network out.
So with the 282 units, D, E, and F, the total buildout, including ABC, is 719. So in A, B, and C, there'll be an additional 400 units. Is that correct?
No, it's not. Under the current density allotment, that's what it could be. But that is not what it will be.
Doesn't look like it.
No.
Okay. So Mosquito Branch Road, not a pretty road. We've seen it's a gravel road, and it's right, it abuts your property. Is that something, have you considered that?
Is that, you're speaking of this road here? Is that correct? From my understanding, that road ends directly where all the stormwater that's flowing from adjacent properties through this property, through the wetlands, and out to Mosquito Branch, which is the main drainage way that runs along this side of the property here. So getting through there, you'd be crossing some serious wetland impacts, and it just was not a feasible option.
Now, is that a, is that cost prohibitive, or is that just not good engineering to do that?
I think you could say it's a little bit of both, for sure. It is, it would definitely be cost prohibitive. But the permitting and the impacts, which we are generally trying to avoid at all costs, would be a major factor there, too, I believe.
So the questions that our planning board member who missed
Yeah.
the in-person meeting, you've prepared answers for them for egress and stormwater. I'm just curious, given the plot of land that you're working with, have you tested for soil contamination?
For soil.
Industrial site. Have you tested the soil?
Engineer, he would have worked with the geotechnicals on this, possibly.
I'm Jay Carmine. I'm Director of Engineering at CLD Engineering. To answer your question, we did have a pretty comprehensive geotechnical evaluation done out here. I'm not able to speak to what they found. They usually don't do a geochemical on that. You know, they do, we were looking at it for boring, boring test, testing to be able to determine what we could do for road grade design, what we could do for ponds and some of that. So it's more of the geophysical side of it.
Right. I'm concerned because it was an industrial site. I have no idea what kind of chemicals or other processes were involved out there. And I would think that you'd want to be proof positive that there was no risk to potential residents. Just curious.
Is the testing that was done, was that a phase one? Did you have a phase one done?
That all, that all happened before we got involved with the project. So yes, as far as these projects, Draypack and that group had this project a couple of years before we, we started kind of working on these plans. But yes, that's part of all of that entitlement process, is phase one, phase twos. So we, but we were not privy to that.
We don't do a phase two unless a phase one indicates it. So I guess my question is, have you reviewed the phase one to see that a phase two isn't warranted?
I have not.
This main road coming off of 211 into the development, how many lanes is that?
It's a two-lane road.
May I suggest that you either add sufficient room to pull off or add another lane at a minimum, simply because in the situation where we would have to evacuate that neighborhood, one car gets stalled, you've got a real problem there.
Sure.
So I want to think about that. Evacuation is a high priority for this whole region. But if you can, if you can foresee that as a problem and take care of it now in your plans, it could save lives.
If you all would go ahead and address the issues that were raised by the planning board member, that would be helpful for me because I got a, pages full of red ink and you may answer all my questions.
Happy to.
Yeah. Yeah. So I'll go through some of them. I think there was like three main concerns that he, he brought up that I reviewed. The first was over the wetland impacts for the stormwater infrastructure that would be required. If you see up here on the map I'm showing here, the area he was speaking about was right here. So the connection from this existing lake called, but it is functioning as a stormwater pond, hydraulically will be connected through that wetland area into the stormwater pond that would eventually outlet to the draws out here. And he asked that we just take a look at that and provide some explanation on why that, that area was chosen. He did it specifically ask if it could just be included with the right-of-way system throughout, buried under the roads and travel down this way, come up the roads, and come into the lake there. And with the And with the existing sewer, water, storm drain, multiple dry utilities, all located within the right-of-way, a circuitous route of a 48-inch stormwater pipe connection without making it a reasonably difficult system to install and maintain, just wasn't feasible here. And again, these are temporary wetland impacts. We are not proposing the removal of these wetlands in these areas. They will come in, dig the trench needed to put the piping in, you know, and restore that area the way it was when they first got there. Additionally, there's also way too many potential vertical conflicts between gravity sewer, storm drain system, pond connection pipes. Temporarily impacting the wetlands was the least impactful, easiest to construct and maintain, and the least expensive option for design and ownership in this situation. And while the temporary impacts do go through the wetland, we did want to point out that these areas are not necessarily some of the highest quality wetlands like you would see in a coastal or riverine wetland situation. I have a series of satellite pictures over the past years that kind of show the situation of this parcel and where those wetland impacts are going to be occurring. So in 2009, this shows the property that was largely wooded for forestry over there, and this is prior to the mining operations that happened. 2011, this was the site, pretty much all trees completely removed. The whole area where those wetland, temporary wetland impacts are going to occur was right in here. It was all previously wooded area that was treed at the time. And then moving forward, that brings us to some of the most recent imagery we were able to get in 2023, and that's showing the site back on there. So that's it today with that overlay, and those temporary impacts are going right through that section there.
So related to stormwater, seeing that this is a relatively new pond, it's not been there for ages and ages, he also expressed a concern about wildlife in that pond. I don't know if there's, is there any wildlife in that pond? Does it contain fish or creatures? And has that been evaluated?
I don't know if that has been evaluated. It is a hydraulically isolated burrow pit essentially that is there, but I cannot answer with facts on what exact animal populations could be there.
I don't know, Matt, somebody, is there not a requirement, if there's something like that on there for the Army Corps to, or someone to evaluate it for species, native species? Snails and slugs and...
The Army Corps DEQ would get involved if there was some impact on the site. I mean, I can't speak, you know, specifically to this pond, but I've worked in plenty of places that had burrow pits for sand mining operations, and there's typically not any fish in there unless someone put them in there. It's been my experience, but it's not a local requirement. It would be a requirement of Army Corps or DEQ should they have regulatory agency over that to, to deal with that evaluation. That kind of speaks to, this is a preliminary subdivision review, so there's, there's other permitting agencies that they'll have to go through even should the board grant this
Right.
preliminary subdivision plat. They've talked about some that they've already gone through, but there may be, I mean, you have to still do stormwater, you have to do your soil erosion control. So this isn't by any means the, the last stop for this. And yeah, other agencies will get involved as their regulatory needs need to be met, and it would be up to, up to these guys to go make sure that they meet those or basically the project stops.
Thank you very much. You're welcome. But I can move on to some more of his other comments. Is there any additional questions regarding the temporary impacts in our basis and reasoning behind the engineering decisions to put stormwater through that area versus through the road network and under all the utilities in the neighborhood? You know, one of the other things that we have to consider is, you know, with a 48-inch stormwater line running under the community through the right-of-way, possibly passing under, you know, portions of people's property, other utilities, if there was ever an event where something like that failed and they had to get in there and work on it, we're not talking about just a small trench to get in there and make repairs like you might see in a roadway right now for a water line or a sewer system in the neighborhood. That would involve some major trenching, major disruptions to the neighborhood, to the residents that live there. So the path that we have chosen was through an area where our wetland consultants specifically said this would be one of the best options for you to go through with temporary impacts, and that's kind of how we arrived at that. Another concern that was brought to attention was the possibility of flooding with the single entrance along 211. Unfortunately, with the existing wetlands, the shape of this parcel or fringes 211, additional connections up there just is not a feasible option for us on this project. The proposed plan, like we have said, does have two more future connections in the event that adjacent parcels become developed. The, the proposed road is planned to be raised about three to five feet from existing elevations on the site. Elevations in that area on our topographic survey right now are around 45. So we're going to be coming up at least three to five feet that whole way coming through. Our design with a large culvert under the proposed roadway will maintain existing wetland drainage patterns, as I said earlier, and those are showing right here. I don't know if you can see it clearly on your screens, but the blue dotted line off property on the east is where those existing drainage ways come through the property. They go up the existing road and under it, they're trenched down here, all along the back of the property where they tie in to the Mosquito Branch, right there. So with our proposed plan, we are not changing that at all. There will be no impacts that redirect that stormwater. We are maintaining the hydraulic function of stormwater drainage the way it is working right now on the site.
So with the, raising the road three feet above the current elevation, is that sufficient to meet your 100-year flood event?
Yes.
It is.
Yeah, yes.
It is.
Absolutely.
So what we did was we, we took the main road and lined it directly on top of that existing road that's in there that's already three to four feet above the surrounding wetlands. So we are up three on top of that, and what we did was we calculated the existing carrying capacity of that ditch that's coming through from the west side, figure out what's the max that can come to that, made sure that the culvert that we placed underneath the road in the same location of where it is now is large enough to handle that Q100 without, without getting up onto the road. So for any probable design event that we can get off of NOAA, I mean, that, that road will not go under during the Q100.
And I believe one of the last concerns that he mentioned was stormwater discharges to adjacent properties. As we showed a few slides back, the stormwater system is designed to meet those NC DEQ standards and will be built to attenuate the post-development discharge below the pre-development discharge. So once this development goes in, everything's designed as planned and approved through all the permitting agencies. Stormwater is not coming off of this site at a rate any faster than it is right now in its undeveloped site. Correct?
Up to the 25 years.
Up to the 25-year storm event. So that water is not just spilling out on the random property adjacent that will negatively impact, it is spilling into the existing drainage patterns for that Mosquito Branch. And that's why I kind of put those elevations up here, showing the 45 up here in the property, 36 over here where our first stormwater pond outlets into that branch, down to 28 down here. So there's a very significant hydraulic draw on this property, stormwater that is coming off our site is being treated, directed into those draws, and should have no impact on those surrounding properties. And at the same time, it is still maintaining those drainage patterns from other properties. So as they develop in the future, and they have to protect these drainage ways, they still have the ability to flow through the site as they are right now and continue on to Mosquito Branch as it is. I think that addressed most of the questions that had brought to our attention from him. If there's any further questions, perhaps you hear?
The location of the pump station, point that out if you could.
Yes. The pump station is right there below the wetlands, right off the right-of-way of the road.
Was there ever any consideration for, rather than building an elevated roadway, putting in a bridge across the wetlands through the entry, through that one acre?
From the, just on the planning level, when, when the, it was a cost consideration with that one to, that one came off the table early, to be honest with you. Because we could make this work with a traditional design, which was, which is standard and something that they can all cost and stomach pretty well.
One other question, we have 162-acre site, and you've identified 39.7, 75 acres of wetlands that are going to be preserved. Can you tell me what the existing acreage of the wetlands is on that 162 acres?
The, the only impacts to the wetlands is about one and a half acres, and that's for that entry road coming in. In order to build that road up, the extra three to five feet, there's just going to be minimal impacts on the sides. They're doing a bit of a retaining wall on one side, kind of bulkhead in it as to preserve that existing drainage way. Most of the feedback from the permitting agencies was to leave that drainage way the way it is now. Don't change it, leave it the way it is. So that's what our engineers worked at doing, and we kept those impacts, you know, below a half acre, so out of almost 40 acres, less than a half of acre are impact, impacted permanently. The rest is just the, the temporary impacts for the stormwater pipe through here.
And I just have one more question. On sheet SP02, one of the notes references sheet CP01 through CP16 for the grading. Have those plans just not been developed yet and, or why do we not have those in our If they've been developed, you know, we should have them. If they haven't been developed, I understand that.
I believe that they, they were submitted with the preliminary plat application.
Because I'm just curious how much dirt is going to be brought in, how much dirt's going to be moved around, how the topography is going to change.
In the next stage after preliminary plat, if it is approved, that's when all that engineering drawings will be coming back to
Okay.
the town for review. So, you know, your stormwater, like I said, he's about two weeks away from submitting his stormwater plans, grading, all of that's going to be reviewed in-house in your town with your stormwater department. So anything he sees that's alarming or he sees that needs to be changed or adjusted, that's going to come back to us, we're going to make those adjustments, and in order to get approved, we have to.
Can we talk about the roads, entrance road for a moment, or all the roads actually? That I sat in the planning board meeting and there was a statement that the town will maintain the roads. Are we acquiring the roads? How, how does this work? If you could clarify that.
Yeah. Yeah, we... So the applicant has proposed public roads and not private roads.
Okay.
So what would happen? They would go in and construct the roads, but prior to the town adopting them, we would require inspections and certain criteria to be met before we officially adopted those roads into our maintenance field. Only if it met those criteria that the Public Works Department inspects and sets, would those streets then be adopted by the town for maintenance at that point. So even though these guys are building public roads, they do have to meet standards and thresholds set by Public Works in order to meet the criteria for adoption of those public roads.
Yeah, they'll all be built to NC DOT standards as required by the town's code, so...
But we're not agreeing on the front end to allow conveyance of...
If whatever reason the roads don't meet those country standards, it's to revert to that, we can either bring them into compliance or figure out...
Matt, is widening that main road from 211 possible, or will the developer commit to widen that road to make sure that evacuations can be safe?
I'd leave them to answer what's feasible on their site. What the town can enforce is minimum criteria for subdivision streets. If they want to go above and beyond at the council's request, that would be at the applicant's requirement, but we don't have anything that would, in our regulatory standards at this point, that would require that road to be wider than a, a normal subdivision street. So it would be up to the applicant to commit to that with the, at the council's request.
And as Mr. Bach presented, I would feel a lot better, again, thinking safety, that they would do core samples for chemical. I can't think of the word I want to use. It's, yeah, for chemicals in the, in the soil, again, for the safety of the residents.
I can relay all these concerns back to the client? Absolutely.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
So when, when the road conveys over to the town, do we then accept responsibility should the pump station fail? Should there be any leakage in the pipe, pipes break? Is that on, would that be on Oak Island?
Just the roads.
At what point would that, would that convey to us and be our, our responsibility?
So we would be taking over and maintaining the road.
Just the roads.
The, the public utilities would be handled by Brunswick County Water and Sewer. So they would be, so should there be a, a line break, then the, the county would respond to, to those concerns.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions, council? Do we have a motion? It's on page 138.
I'll make the motion to approve the proposed major subdivision preliminary plat.
Second.
All in favor? One, two, three.
So are we, are we, is this subject to any kind of caveat or is this just a carte blanche approval that we give in right now?
This is for, simply for the plat as it's presented. There are other stages of approvals that they will bring to us for ensuring that... How, what am I trying to say, Matt? Please. My brain is fried.
You're okay. It's been a long evening for all of us. No, this, this is the, the last checkpoint for town council on a development like this. They do have to go through other regulatory permit requirements, but the preliminary plat is what council reviews. And to be clear, what you're reviewing it for is for compliance with our subdivision regulations in the UDO. If it meets those subdivision regulations within the UDO, to be frank with you, the applicant is entitled to their permit. It doesn't say they, that they may get a permit, it says that they shall get a permit.
Okay.
And what I was trying to get to earlier is there are additional steps, but those are typically administrative. They don't come to town council for review for those other permitting processes.
Thanks, ma'am. Thank you.
Matt, we respected a question about like soil testing and some of those things you're going to bring back to the owner. I mean, is that, are we going to hear that back here or is this just going to go some other department?
Can we finish the vote?
Well, before, I need to know what I'm voting on first, ma'am, if I could. I just want to get clarification.
Yeah. This is not a, unless there's a condition that the council sets related to a specific ordinance criteria being met, it can't be conditioned. You can make a request to the applicant and they can commit to that, but there wouldn't be another checkpoint for them to meet with, with town council, as her.
You ready to vote now?
Sure.
Let's do this again. All in favor? Unanimous.
I will say, if I may, Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
And in response to the question I asked about soil contamination... soil contamination, out of due diligence and good faith, you're going to take a look at the Phase 1 results, which you admitted you haven't seen, but presumably they're benign, right? Would that be fair?
Absolutely.
Okay. There you go.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
So 5.2 was withdrawn, 5.3, consideration of creating a steering committee for the Recreation Center Facilities Assessment Project. Catherine?
Thank you. We're excited to have this before you and have this moving forward quickly. We would like to propose a five to six-person committee to assist as this rec center project moves forward. We've recommended two staff to be a part of it, two council members, and someone from the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. We have recommended the chairman.
I, I would support that, that committee being six people. I think there are two people on the rec board who would be very pertinent to the conversation that's going to take place with the rec center.
We would welcome that.
If my colleagues would support that.
That would be great.
I'll take it a step further and suggest that for the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, rather than trying to identify specific individuals, that we do the chairperson and then an at-large or an alternate. So they might be interested in rotating through some of the discussions or sharing the discussions. And that way, we get even, you know, varied points of view from the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. And then that way, someone who may not be able to attend a meeting, there's an alternate that can go and, and sit there. So I like two people from the Parks and Rec Board. I'm just not sure, we need to name them by name, but that would be my suggestion.
I think too natural.
I mean, there are, there are two natural, but I, I mean, I would leave that to the town manager and the, and the staff to identify those people.
And then council gets two.
Yes, and, and we would like if we could do that tonight, because this is going to move quickly.
I make a motion to create a Recreation Center Facilities Assessment Steering Committee, as described, comprised of the Park and Recreation Advisory Board Chairman and one other Parks and Rec Advisory Board person, two staff, and council members Terry Cartner and Bill Kraft. We've already talked.
And just to note, the mayor and the manager are also part of that.
I'll second that motion.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? And a motion to adjourn?
Move, Madam Mayor.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Everybody.
And it's unanimous. Thank you for your patience.